Order and if you'll rise and then let's say the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with our work session. The work session is scheduled actually has two items tonight. And I know there are several of you here that want to speak. We are going to attempt to complete the work session within the hour because our regular meeting does start at 5:30. But if we run over, we'll make provisions and we'll figure out a way to let each of you address the council with your ideas and thoughts. So we'll begin, receive a report, hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the creation of a task force for improvement communications between the city and residents. City manager?
Yes, good afternoon, mayor members of council. Hope you had a good holiday yesterday. Get right into it since we are short on time and want to make sure we get as much information as we can. So the first item is talking about a communications task force. One of the things that was brought forward back in, I guess, early June was an opportunity to talk about how we can, the city certainly can improve on communications. We're always looking at ways that we can improve our communications. It's obviously a two-way street, but certainly there's always room for improvement. The discussion that we had back in early June was to, for council to potentially commission a task force that allows a group of subject matter experts, citizens, people that have connections in the community, people that do this for a profession, to really do a deep dive into the things that we do as an organization. Really, the four provisions that were part of this were to look at the way we do things now, to gather input from a variety of folks within the community and certainly those subject matter experts, professionals, to provide any review and assess the findings of what they found through the conversations with the public, along with just, really just doing that analysis and review of what goes on in the organization as we communicate. And then lastly, is to deliver some conclusions and recommendations. So through that analysis and review and that input, to come back with refinements and suggestions on how we can proceed to make improvement. Some of those may require additional funding if that's needed, or just a complete review of how we do business. And so very, definitely very much open to that type of review and input. And so I think it's a great idea. You all mentioned about wanting to have some folks to consider being a part of that. And so we had received input from all five of you on names. And so I just received the final name in the packet that you had. I had a placeholder just underneath Natalie Ruckel. I had it as Natalie Areola. And so I changed that last name, but we added Kyle Childress just before lunch today. So, but as you can see, there's about 10 members of this committee. What we are looking at is having two members appointed from each of you. And then if you are comfortable and feel, want to proceed with this, my suggestion would be, based on conversations that you all have and questions you may have of me, my thoughts would be, if you're comfortable with the scope, if you're comfortable with the names, that we would bring it forward on the 21st, your next regularly scheduled council meeting, to formally appoint those members so we can go ahead and get started. I will tell you, there are a few things that are right off the bat that I'd like to have some input on from this group. One of those is a website refresh. We've been talking about doing a website refresh for quite some time. It's time for us to do that. And so I would love to get that input from members of the community, members of this committee, on not only just the way website is structured now, but even future designs and look of the website. Another thing is just emergency and urgent communications, obviously with the winter storm that we went through back this past February, along with even just a more recent here, this past weekend with more of an isolated issue with water notices. We had lost some water pressure because of a water main break. You know, we need to look at that. We need to look at, see how people communicate, especially when you lose power or you don't have access to internet or you don't have access to social media. There are a lot of free ways in which you can communicate, but a lot of times it doesn't always, it doesn't always touch the folks that we need to come in contact with. So I'm really very interested in finding out, when you lose power, when you lose all basically, what we would consider normal ways of communicating right now, how can we reach to the public? And so that would be very important. And there are a number of other things too that we can certainly get into. Like I said, one of those is that website refresh, that emergency and urgent communications that we really would like to get that input on. And there would be a lot of other things that I think we can look into once folks get together and we get moving on this project. So with that, I really wanted to make it short and sweet. Hopefully it covers most of items because we haven't had that conversation with the committee, but certainly welcome any questions from the council if you have any of me.
Okay, I would like to start with public comment. Anyone have any thoughts on this item? Okay, you none? Ms. Ballinger?
I think it's a great idea.
I mean, it's a great idea, but one of the things that, like keeping in touch with the elderly. I think that in communicating with them, we should be elderly plus one other person for that elderly person.
So add an additional person, is that what you're saying, Mr. Baldwin?
Right. For that particular elderly person. You know, if I call my grandmother, she's not going to know anything, right? But if you have somebody that's assigned to her to maybe go check on her or whatever.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Okay, so the thought would be that we would bring these names forward, formally approve these by you all so that we can then contact these individuals and go ahead and start going on scheduling meetings and discussions on the kind of scope. Okay?
Okay, so we will move on to B. Receive an update, hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the proposed comprehensive land use plan and downtown master plan studies. City manager?
Yes, again, mayor members of council, thank you again. Again, want to go quickly to give enough opportunities for the public to speak. Just wanted to kind of give a quick recap of just kind of what we've gone through the last number of months. And then certainly opening it up for time for you all to ask questions of me and certainly for the, based on the public to provide some input and get their feedback. So again, going back, some things that we want to talk about is timeline recap. Once we started these discussions, really then hopefully have some conversation amongst yourselves as a body and then so we know kind of which direction you want to go. There has been discussions about a steering committee, so I wanted to bring that information up to you, kind of where we are. The financial recap, because these are expensive projects, there's no question. And not lost on me, it is a lot of money that we're talking about, so just kind of wanted to give you a recap in regards to that. And then finally, really, if time allows, is to find out from you all, how do you all want to proceed? So we'll give you a timeline. We started this back in December of last year, December 15th to be exact, as a workshop. One of the things I'd charge staff when I first started was, you know, based on, you know, just where you are as far as your profession and your area of expertise in the organization, what are some of these studies and strategies that you think would be important from a priority perspective to move the community forward, move the organization forward? One of those that came out from this was the fire station location study. That was one of those small projects that we looked into that was being completed. And Chief Kiplinger is out and about making those presentations in the community. And I know he's done a few, did one last week at Rotary. And he's been out about having conversations with the community about the results of that study. So we discussed it in front of council on the 15th of December. We knew it was a lot to cover, so we waited a month to make sure, based on the information that was given and give you the opportunity to counsel the time to digest the information. And really just, how do you want to proceed? Did we want to proceed with moving forward on any of these things? Or do you want to just kind of, just delay those things and come back at a later time? At the time, back in January, the direction was to move at least with a comprehensive land use plan and a downtown master plan. The thought behind that was to do a request for qualifications, to try to nail down a consultant or consultants. And so that was the direction that was given. On March 7th, the RFQs, the request for qualifications, were published. We received submittals, a number of submittals on the 26th of March. Believe we received 13 for the comp plan and 10 for the master plan. And if I got those reversed, we did receive quite a few RFQs, requests for qualifications for those two projects. We had a panel review those RFQs. It consisted of some staff members along with a member of the McHale and always, which is the last name, Dr. K, from SFA to help review those submittals on April the 5th. Again, I threw in the May election because again, it was important. Then we had, and then, and then May 11th and 13th, we interviewed those semi-finalists for the comp plan and the downtown plan to try to hear at least their approaches on these projects. On May 18th, we had a newly seated council, or at least a couple of members of council, with mayor and Councilmember Ballinger. So we provided an update as to where we were, where we've been, so kind of a recap of this timeline. At the time, it was suggested that we have some public forum. And originally I'd suggest that we have at least one public forum. The thought was to have a second forum. So we had two of those. On June 7th and 8th, we had the first one over at CBTX in the community room. It was a packed house, literally standing room only. And then we had one the following day at the recreation center, again, very full. Believe it was probably standing room only, if I remember correctly, because just about every chair was taken, if not, all chairs were taken. Between the two meetings, we had 325, 330 or so participants, almost equally split between the two evenings. Went through a series of slides to just talk about the merits of the planning process and why it was important for us to do that. And so answered a lot of questions at both of those meetings. And then we also followed up with an informal survey where people could respond. And we had quite a bit of respondents on those surveys. Again, it wasn't scientific. It was just to kind of gauge, to see the input of what people thought and where they wanted to go moving forward. On June 15th, we did a recap of the June 7th and 8th meeting to discuss those forums, follow up with some of the survey results. And at the time, the city council gave the directions to act to proceed with moving forward with the process, with the project. So fast forward into, later into the summer, August 24th, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a special workshop over at the recreation center for the city council to at least meet some virtually and some in person with the consultant DTJ Design. They were the two, excuse me, they were the firm that was elected to do both the downtown plan and the comp plan, comprehensive land use plan. And so that was an opportunity for council to get a chance to meet with them, learn a little bit about who they are, their approach to these projects, and then talk about the citizen committees. Along the way, and I failed to mention this, back on the 18th of May and then certainly June 15th, you all gave the direction to proceed with creating some citizens committees. And at the time, we had talked about having a smaller group, I believe it was nine members of both groups for each study. And then based on the input that I heard on the 7th and 8th, amended my recommendation to add some additional participants to that because I thought it was important to have a larger group as best we can for each of these two committees to get hopefully a better representation of the community. So again, August 24th, we had that workshop with council. No action was taken. It was really designed to, you all, to meet who they were, them to meet who you are and to learn again, more about their approach to the studies and then also to just kind of give you all an update on the names of the committees. And I'll share those here in just a little bit. So here we are tonight. It is September the 7th. And again, just to kind of really get, kind of get your input as to how do you want to move forward based on what you heard on the 24th of August or just in general. So just a real quick recap on the committee makeup. We're looking at 15 folks for the comp plan, the comprehensive land use plan. And I apologize if I, you know, use the shortened terminology, but the comprehensive land use plan, also known as the comp plan, and the downtown plan, 14 folks. Based on the input you all provided and discussions with me, these are the representatives that you're looking at doing as far as 10 members from the community for both of these groups, or all members of the community, but 10 from each of this group for each of these studies. And then we would have specific representation from certain areas, whether it be the school district, planning zoning commission, an SFA representative, Netco on the comprehensive land use plan, also a council member. We would also look at having a councilman for the downtown plan, someone from Main Street, from the historical land use preservation committee, and someone from the CDB board, the convention and visitors bureau, and then some members from the community. Again, as mentioned, when we, if we have these meetings, if we get started, all these meetings would be open to the public. Internally, all of these folks would be appointed by city council. For the comprehensive land use plan, at this time, we don't know who the council member is that would be representative, whether it's one or two council members, we don't know yet. We just, we don't, I have not had that conversation with you as a group. But based on the input you all provided, here are the names that were submitted to me and also some that were, that applied through the committee process that we had. And so you see the names that we have here based on what the input you provided for the comprehensive land use plan and also the input from staff. And then the next slide is the names that were provided for the downtown plan. So again, to touch on what I mentioned a few weeks ago, the premise of the committee is to obviously to represent the community. You know, they are sort of the, I'm going to say boots on the ground, but they are the ones that because of, they're working through this process, they have those connections in the community that either staff may not have, certainly consultants are going to have, but it's a way to make those connection points into the community is one way. They are there to provide guidance and direction to both the consultant and the staff to make sure things are progressing. They stay connected. They serve as hosts. Sometimes if we're out in a specific venue that we just may not have access to because we're not a member of a specific church or we may not have that connection point in the community, the intent would be that, hopefully that those representatives would be able to get those service hosts and facilitate the event happening at a specific venue. Mr. Baldwin, you had mentioned on the previous discussion about hard-to-reach populations, especially the elderly. You know, I would hope that because of the folks that you all have chosen, or at least recommended, that they have a means to getting hold of folks that, again, may be challenging to get to and help participate in the engagement process. You know, they've got their individual network, so again, it's making those connection points in those communities that they've had all these many years. We want to make sure that the group is diverse and so again, continue that process. Overall, the guiding principles for these committees, staying engaged, having regular attendance, be a participant in the process. A quorum is a simple majority, so we don't need to overly complicate that. So if it's a 15-member board, I guess it would be basically eight or more, 14, seven or more to conduct business. Decision-making is done through group consensus. There's decorum at all times. Obviously, there's going to be debate and there's going to be differences of opinion, but at the end, this is about being, obviously engaging and certainly there are opportunities for disagreement and debate, but maintaining decorum amongst all members, including the consultant staff and certainly the expectation, I think, of the committees. And then as I mentioned a little bit ago, all these meetings are open to the public. So the finances, as I mentioned, these aren't inexpensive projects based on the input that we had received from the consultants and working through some of the negotiations at this point, which is still ongoing. Based on the price points that we have received from both groups, or excuse me, for both projects is just shy of $130,000. There are some reimbursables just for traveling, et cetera, and so we're rounding to $450,000. Based on conversations that I've had last week at the Netco executive board meeting, there was a request from myself, from me, to ask for $50,000 contribution, $50,000 contribution from the Netco board. That's pending approval. It was approved at the executive committee, but it didn't go to the full membership. It will go to the full membership later this week. The other ask is that $50,000 of that, of that $450,000 would come from the economic development fund that we have, that's been established. You all recently approved a policy to allow those funds to be used for economic development, for studies and planning studies. So it falls within the confines or the criteria for those funds. And the remainder would come from general fund reserves. Again, just to kind of give you an idea of, the economic development fund has a net of just under $490,000. And the estimated fund balance in the general fund as of end of last month is just shy of $11.8 million. So just, again, just what we're looking for today, if possible, is really kind of get the direction from you all. Do we proceed with this project? If so, my hope would be that we would bring forward to you a contract for your consideration at your next regular meeting, which would be the 21st of September, along with the appointments of the committees. If you choose, if you believe that we don't want to do this project, you know, then just let me know. Just through the direction from you, do we want to proceed or do we not want to proceed? Or are there some other options that you want to consider that we can at least go back to the drawing board or go back and discuss internally with staff along with the consultant, see if there's some other options to consider? Because I don't know what those options are right now. But really kind of, there may be some, obviously some creative minds here, but if there are some other options, I'd be happy to hear them. But really, what I'm looking for hopefully tonight, and if not tonight, very, very soon, is do we go or no go at the end? We've been having these conversations since last December and so just really just want to know if we want to proceed with this project or not. And I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, yes. We, I'm learning as I go. And in workshops, public comment is, we can do it or we don't have to do it. But we certainly want to do it tonight. We know you're interested. Many of you want to speak. And so, but if you would, if you'd just help us be respective of our time. And, you know, we've got 35, 40 minutes, so if you would do that, I'd certainly appreciate it. And so with that, kind of like what we've done in the past, I would ask the people, anybody who wants to speak for the plan, to speak at this time. Okay? All right? Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
State your name and your address.
Ron Collins. I'm a 40-year banker here in Nacogdoches. But anyway, Mr. Mayor, council members, regarding the plan. You know, I know that there's a lot of work that we need to do to progress Nacogdoches properly. And I don't know how we would be able to do that without a proper plan. And so I would encourage, from my standpoint, if we're going to move forward with making a lot of changes or things that we want to enhance what we have today, that we make the proper investment, you know, in funds to get the right firm to give us the direction that we need to, you know, work out the details and follow a path for progress, whatever that might be. And I look at it more economically and growth and all the things that I think the vast majority of those in Nacogdoches would want to see that we probably have not seen as much of as we could have for years. I think something that's very important with this plan, if we make this investment, and that's the way I look at it, is that we follow whatever it is and that we hold people accountable. You know, I'm looking at y'all, you know, really to hold the people that are going to carry this out, you know, to stay on course and to do the things that we get the right return out of this investment because it is a lot of money. There's no question. We're spending a lot of money. But at the same time, I think if you look at it from an investment, it's very necessary. The last thing I did without a plan was when I built a small fort out of two-by-four lumber at my house when I was a kid. It didn't turn out too good. And so I think what we want to do is we want to have a good plan. And if we have the right plan, then we probably, hopefully will get the right type of results if we employ ourselves properly to be able to carry that out. And so that's my impression of it. I don't think we can spend enough money, honestly. I know it's a lot of money and it sounds like a lot of money, but it's kind of like when you build your house. You don't really want to spend money on a set of plans, but it's necessary. It's something that's very, very important for you to get the right outcome that you want. And I think that's true of this particular, you know, item, is we need to invest properly in a plan to carry out what we want and get the results that we want. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It is 1827 York Drive, Nacogdoches, Texas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else speak for the plan? Okay, anybody that would speak against the plan? Barbara, Ms. Gandy, I think, was first. And then Ms. Anderson, you'll be next. You can tell us your name and your address, please.
I'm Barbara Gandy, 725 Crooked Creek, Nacogdoches.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking to us tonight.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Barbara Gandy and a very concerned citizen. I've had a real estate career in Nacogdoches for over 40 years. And my involvement with the city in the past has been to be a member of the Main Street Board for about 10 years, ending my tenure as chairman for the last two. I was very fortunate to be involved during the period that Charles Bright and his right-hand helper, Gala Mize, were so active in improving our downtown. I think if they saw your priorities for the city, they would be dismayed. They are both my heroes and have had a strong influence on me. Now my concerns. In the strategic priorities for the Nacogdoches City Council for downtown, there is no mention of history or historical preservation. There has been so much hard work here and it seems of no importance. One observation I've had when looking at the committee members for the downtown master plan, there's no representation of the Bright Foundation. I find this hard to believe. There is the priority of diversity. The question is, why do we need to pay consultants to help us achieve diversity when we have diversity? You only have to look at our city council, city manager, city attorney, our present and past school superintendent. This is a very diverse group we can be proud of and we've done it on our own. This is your priority of revitalization of neglected neighborhoods. Which ones are you referring to? Why do we need consultants for this? Are these neighborhood, are there code issues? If so, the city needs to address this. Now my wishes. Do not hire a consulting firm that is from another part of the country that will probably give us a very generic plan and has been given priorities that many citizens would not agree with and they really know nothing of our community or way of life. I think there will be a waste of tax mayor's money. I have always felt that we have not achieved our potential with our downtown. I am all for it being a destination and having more entertainment, but it needs to be in keeping with what we have started, which is preserving our history. I do think it would be helpful to hire a consultant that is familiar with our top of town to help with a master plan for the downtown area. No plan will work though if it is not user-friendly. Try to do something about the recurring theme that the city makes. It's so hard to develop anything downtown. As a realtor, I've seen firsthand the desperate need we need for more R1 neighborhoods. When you say your priority is attainable housing option, that seems very vague and I am not sure what you mean by this. If you want to have economic development, which I am totally for, you have got to have available R1 housing. Again, I do not see needing a consultant for this. The city needs to get problems worked out with water and other issues, so new subdivisions are feasible. I'm here representing myself and my husband, Bill. We both love Nacogdoches and want what is best for our community. Please go in a different direction. Thank you for listening and for your time and for being willing to serve.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. My concern today is about this comprehensive city plan for a small fee of, I'm going to say almost half a million dollars, because it's pre-close, that this five hundred thousand dollar or four hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment is just a roadmap for possibilities with no guarantees. So what I would like to remind the council is that you are representing the voters. So I do understand that we do have existing city plan that is outdated and research that I've researched, most of the plans were never followed due to whether management change or city leadership change. So what I'm saying is, for the record, I think it's a big waste of our taxpayers' money that could be better spent. Now, I'm not saying that we don't need a plan. I'm saying the consultant fee. Let's consider a more practical approach. Instead of hiring outside consultants who has no vested interest in our city, let's utilize the resources that we have within the community, like SFA. And we have many successful, small business-minded, business-minded individuals who can team up with the city manager and city planner. I mean, are they not, our city manager and our planner not able to share the vision to accomplish this goal? Before our city commits to this outrageous burden of five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars consulting fee, please consider improving our current problems at hand, our infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, telecommunication. We can all agree that without proper infrastructure, there is no growth. It doesn't matter what kind of plan you have. Many voters have placed confidence in your leadership to represent our behalf. Please oppose this frivolous spending to hire TDJ Design Group. We do not want to see our historic community turning into another city like Austin. There's always a price to pay for sake of progress. Instead, I recommend, I recommend us focusing our energy for improvements if we have money to spend. Many are struggling right now to find help due to COVID. They've lost businesses, employment. So let us not burden your voters anymore. We have placed a great trust and responsibility to you to oversee our spending and to improve the way of life here, our home. So I do believe that you're here and you're volunteering your time because you do have a desire to serve, and I want to thank you for that and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure. Ms. McCrary.
Hi, I'm Mary McClary, and I live at four thousand five Regay Street. I'm retired professor emeritus, Regents Professor at SFA where I taught for thirty years, and I'm married to architect Jerry Sutton. One of the primary responsibilities of our city elected officials is to provide essential city services like water, garbage pickup, and the like. The other is to be a good steward of what is collected in taxes. It's really easy to become a little casual about this when it's somebody else's money. And the, the numbers are big. We get used to those kind of big numbers when we're on committees and things. That four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is more money than many of our Nacogdoches citizens will ever see in an entire lifetime. We need a plan, but we need one conducted locally and one that is less costly. I compare our situation to a family where the kids can't count on a good meal. The pantry's almost bare, but the parents want to spend the remaining money on extras like a subscription to Netflix. You think I'm exaggerating. We have that sort of situation with water in Nacogdoches. I want to remind the City Council of how critical our situation is. Ten years ago, in two thousand eleven, our city was nearly out of water. Ten years! We relied too much on Lake Nacogdoches while our other sources, our wells, were neglected. There was no preventive maintenance. When wells went down, they stayed down. So here we are at year ten, when we're scrambling to provide constant predictable water. The Army Corps of Engineers runs Lake Nacogdoches and allows us to draw about twenty million gallons a day, but we are only capable of treating about half of that, ten million gallons. And even that's a stretch. Our water sort of meets standards, but not high standards. I'm sure you're all aware of it's often yellow, it tastes bad, and there's often sediment. We've got two water pipelines that come from Lake Nacogdoches to Nacogdoches. The newest was completed a few years ago. That's great. But the oldest one utilizes nineteen seventies technology, and in order to get repairs on it, we have to bring in technicians from Dallas. Fast forward to this winter and the nightmare we all remember. Things like that, when the water treatment plant goes out, that's not supposed to happen in a first-world city. You know, the city expanded the building recently, but they didn't expand the capability of treating the water. And remember all the rain that we had in the spring when that caused infiltration into the sewer system? And this infiltration was spilled into the Llamanda Creek and caused pollution. We need better sewer, sewer treatment and water treatment in order to expand the business opportunities here in town. We, or a crisis waiting to happen. We understand that the city intends to float a bond issue for water. We probably need that. But wouldn't it be more likely to pass if the City Council demonstrated a frugality and a thoughtful approach to spending money? Why not go ahead and start spending some of this money that's being designated for the, for the, for the comprehensive plan? Why don't we start, go, start right now and start fixing water here? Let's go ahead and do it right now. Next time you lose water, what will you tell your constituents? Well, we've got these binders that are going to, you know, give us a plan. We've got some binders. The binders aren't going to take care of their needs. We need a plan, but we need a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Lassiter, how are you today?
Good, good. I'm Albert Lassiter, sixty-twenty North Street, but got a new address inside the city limits at one sixteen Old Post Oak Road. But I, I want to summarize four instances where I think the City Council has lost a little bit of credibility, and I think that's what's leading to a lot of scrutiny on this plan. And then I'm going to offer a couple of ideas on maybe how we can all come together and get a plan established and approved. Number one, I think the, you know, the City Council was supposed to be about meat and potatoes issue, you know, fixing city streets. We've been talking about water. But, you know, I guess my question is, is diversity inclusion a Nacogdoches idea? Did a Nacogdochian come up with the literature behind this? And why is it, and obviously the answer is no, right? That is a concept that has come from afar. It is coming from the National Democratic Party. It's coming from other socialists, and, and that is now being imbued or put upon the citizens of Nacogdoches. So it's not, the City Council is no longer just concerned about local issues. We're looking to be involved with other national issues. And I think this, you know, helps to, it goes against the credibility of the City Council that you're not concerned about local issues. Number two, I think the speed and lack of transparency on vetting these consultants is putting up some red flags. From RFQ to submission date was about fifteen days. The criteria used to evaluate those RFQs is unknown to, at least to me. I know the leader of DTJ got three hundred and fifty-seven points, but I have no idea what constituted three hundred and fifty-seven points. And more importantly, was past performance used to indicate future benefits from the city? In other words, did these cit, these, these consultants put in their, these programs, did they provide an ROI to those cities? In other words, you know, if you invest this money, did these cities ever get a return on that investment? That has to be established. That has to be part of the criteria to pick a winner. Can they not only offer a plan, but can they give us, you know, history on previous jobs that had actually paid off and made money? I, I didn't see that in any of the literature. If it's there, point me in the right direction. But I think, you know, that, that, that adds doubt that it was a good vetting process. Number three, I don't think we've been totally honest with everybody on the total cost of this endeavor. We're, we're up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get the plan, but execution is not in there, right? So we're at, we're, we don't know what that's going to be, right, to implement this plan? It could be five million, could be ten million dollars. Where's that money going to come from? Probably a bond. How are we going to finance the bond? Well, we're going to have to raise taxes. Let's just have that conversation and put it out there. And I think there's been a little bit of an effort to not really talk about the full cost. And I think we just need to go ahead and put that out there that, you know, that this is going to cost, this endeavor is going to cost a lot of money, and we need to be prepared to pay for that. And if we're not, then we shouldn't even be having this conversation. If the city's not, and the citizenry's not in a position or ready to raise taxes or float a bond, there's really no way we can implement this plan. I did see for the first time that there's a reserve fund of eleven million dollars. I don't know if that is the bucket of money that can be used for implementing this plan or is that just the city's reserve? I, I'll have to do some more research on that. And the fourth item is, and this happens, some of y'all run on City Council all the time, but there was the blanket pay raise for city employees. I, I, I don't know any other organization that would have instituted a blanket pay raise for all employees without taking into account merit. You don't, I don't, you wouldn't have done it at the bank, and I don't think you'd have done it at the law firm. You would offer somebody a raise based off of performance or that they've done a good job. You know, it is, it is, it has a flavor of, of getting away from a meritocracy and adding, which is right up, which is right into the DNI, the diversity and inclusion, you know, literature that we're seeing coming from the Democrat Party and other socialists. I don't like it. I think meritocracy is one of the great things that made America an exceptional country. And the further we go away from that, you know, we're going to, I think it's going to lead to bad things. And we're seeing, you know, we're seeing in other larger cities, and I think a lot of these consultants look at Portland, they look at New York, other cities that have implemented a lot of these plans, and it hasn't led to a positive outcome. And we certainly don't need that here in Nacogdoches. So those are four examples where I think the credibility of the City Council has been chipped at, and I think that needs to be reestablished. And four ways, real quick, of how that can be done. I think first, you got to reduce the scope of this project. I think you need to, you need to narrow it down. Pick one, whether it's the downtown program, I sixty-nine corridor, or maybe a North Street, South Street beautification project. But it's important for the City Council to get a win on the board. Narrow it down, build consensus, you know, go through this process that's been outlined. I think this is a, a smaller project, it's something that our own city planner can do. This will now be her third city plan or comprehensive plan to do. Certainly she can lead one now. I think we can save money on that end. And I think once you get a win on the board, that credibility will be reestablished, and then we can look at a larger, more grand, grandiose program. But it's important, I think, to get a small win on the board. Another idea is that Netco already paid Pegasus for, for a study last year. It's a good study. Page seventeen of that study outlines exactly in a priority list of what can be done to improve Nacogdoches. I mean, I read it. I think it's great. I think we already have the plan. And I bet you if we'd paid for this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar comprehensive plan, we're probably going to have a table that looks very similar to what Pegasus already provided Netco last year. So, you know, I think we should just run with one of those ideas that's in the Pegasus consulting firm. So another idea is, and something I just want to talk about, is that, you know, SFA, and it's not really talked about a lot, but SFA is suffering, right? It had a twelve million dollar shortfall. You know, that's a big deal. You know, if, if SFA gets taken over by another university system, that's going to make an impact. We need SFA to be strong. It didn't help that the, you know, the, the president took an eighty-five thousand dollar raise and then had to rescind it because of, I think, you know, the public wasn't too happy about that. But, you know, it looks like we are taking some of these diversity inclusion ideas that, that have added overhead to SFA, and we're now bringing that to City Council, right? Because she was, she was one that helped vet the consultants, was the DNI director at SFA. So, I mean, I don't think we should be mimicking what's going on at SFA and bring that to City Council government. It's not working for SFA, and it's not going to work for Nacogdoches. So, you know, in summary, you know, I think we need to concentrate on making Nacogdoches a great place to live. Don't get caught up in the redistribution of wealth. Let's, you know, business leaders are going to come here because it's a great place to live. The Pegasus study outlined how we can make that happen. We already paid for it. Let's just execute. You know, and I think that's really my bottom line, is that we don't, you know, what we need to do is just execute on a smaller plan, get that win on the board, and then we go on to the next one. And I think once you do that, you know, you're going to have, instead of one person, four and twenty against, you're going to, it'll be flipped because we'll now believe in you. But right now, there's a credibility gap, and we just, you guys need to help reestablish that. So thanks very much for your time.
Just one point to set the record straight. Commercial Bank has a fourteen dollar an hour minimum wage rate. It was set about probably six months ago.
Okay. Well, I stand corrected on that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
How are you?
Well, everybody said everything, mostly what I wanted to say, but I do have a couple of things to add. I'm Nanny Smith, thirty-eight twenty-one Regay Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mine was that I went to one of your meetings, one of the large meetings. There was quite a few people that had things to say. Their, the things that I got out of it, their feelings were that they knew we needed things done, and they agreed to that on some of the things that you thought we needed also. But they were very much to be realistic about the, the things that you had, and they wanted it to be financially sound in a manner that they felt would be for our size city. Another thing is that I, in reading the things that you had on your website, was that this company had experienced and had dealt with cities that were called urban populations. We are not considered an, and an urban policy is, policy is one that's next to a metro city, which we are not. But we sit in a, to me, a wonderful part of the country, and we have three larger cities around us that we can draw from, and we are considered a rural area. And so I think this, that when the feedback comes from them, their experience is with the rural, the, the, yeah. And so that's not the same thing. So if they're going to try to lump us into that, we're not fitting in that situation. So that was a kind of a thing that I thought was important for us to think. And then not only that, but this, the new way of staying home and work now, you don't have to go to the, the big companies downtown. They're, and they're finding out that this is working, that people are really doing their work when they are at home. And so I've already heard of two people that have come here with Amazon already, not too too long ago. So I see this happening. We've got the perfect place and, and the history and the, nobody's even mentioned about our gardens. I mean, we're getting like seven hundred or so a month people to come to visit, and we, the tourism money and the tax revenue that they all spend about a hundred and fifty or so dollars when they're here. So I hope that this is also a consideration when y'all are making up your mind on how this goes. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Yes, ma'am.[1734.37]
And then, not only that, but this, the new way of staying home and work now, you don't have to go to the big companies downtown. They're, and they're finding out that this is working, that people are really doing their work when they are at home. And so I've already heard of two people that have come here with Amazon already, not too, too long ago. So I see this happening. We've got the perfect place, and the history, and the, nobody's even mentioning about our gardens. I mean, we're getting like 700 or so a month people to come to visit, and we, the tourism money and the tax revenue that they all spend about 150 or so dollars when they're here. So I hope that this is also a consideration when y'all are making up your mind on how this goes. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joanne Engler. I live at 1239 County Road 721, but I'm a taxpayer. And I've lived in Nacogdoches for over 50 years, and I love it. It's my, it's my home. I'd like to just say that instead of a corporate group giving the opportunity to put their spin on how the oldest town in Texas should look, I believe we have the ingenuity to enhance what we are and how we look within our beautiful town with efforts from concerned citizens. And that effort doesn't cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, for example, I've just come across these in our daily Sentinel. A Nacogdoches businesswoman, Maple Cannings, is challenging the black community, small business owners, with her motto, "Rise," which is, "Reach inside and shift the energy." She's planning an event September 25th at the rec center where these small business owners will present examples of their work. And I think that the city will, the town will support that with their attendance. Another, the Parks Advocacy League, PAL, is revitalizing the Robert McCrimmon Park on Woden Road by having fundraisers to buy equipment. Their mission is to increase public awareness, and as I've already heard the word, stewardship of Nacogdoches city parks. This organization is addressing an important quality that we must keep in mind, and that is being good stewards of all the beauty that Nacogdoches has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Jenny Judson. I live at 1532 McEwen Drive. I just retired as Regional Director for Child Protective Services last week. So this is the first time I've had, like, two minutes to look at what's going on in our city. But I do have a huge concern about spending this amount of money to an outside consultant. I came to Nacogdoches in 1983 to go to school, and I stayed because of the charm and the grace and the family values and the historic heritage in our community. And I'm very concerned about taking my money, my taxpayer dollars, and sending them out of our community to somebody who does urban development for our little, small town. Nacogdoches is a great town the way it is. It's great for raising families. Yes, we need to make improvements. Much of what's been said, I agree with. Our water system has got to be improved. Beautification of North and South Street, it's very unattractive out there. But I'm very concerned about maintaining that charm. I'm concerned about maintaining the safety of our community, where I was able to raise my son and not worry about him when he was out running the streets, for the most part. I'm concerned about our heritage, the preservation of our history, that your plan does not address preservation of history. And Nacogdoches is first and foremost a historic community. We're the oldest town in Texas. We're on the Camino de Real. You know, those pieces of our history are critical, not just to Nacogdoches, but to the state of Texas. And we have a responsibility to preserve those. Our community does need to make improvements. I think we need to be careful about using the word "progress" because that's been noted, that is a word that's couched in the folds of the skirt of the National Democratic Socialists. And we need to be cautious about that. As a reminder, I do thank you all for your service to our city, but I do want to remind you that you are hired by us to do this work, and you need to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. I made my employees take an oath at CPS that they would be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And I expect that from the council members that serve us as well. And I do not want my money spent on an outside consultant when there's plenty of talent, skill, energy, and knowledge right here in town with people who have skin in the game, people who are committed to this community, who love this community and are proud to live here. Those are the people that need to be making these kinds of recommendations for our city. I just think it's important, I think, when you have an outside consultant like that come in, you are going to cause our city to be urbanized, and I don't think anybody here wants that. And I think you're also going to start crushing the middle class with these sorts of plans. So I'm asking you to please not do this.
Thank you. We've got about five minutes. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Ann Keenan, and I live over at 609 East Hospital Street. And I just wanted to say one thing that I believe city council already knows, which is that the idea to have more inclusion and diversity, and to have our city open up to all the residents, the people who traditionally are not ever served, and they'll never get a chance to show up, and if they do show up, they're not listened to. Those people have long needed a voice at the table. And what I saw at that last city council meeting is a lot of people have been trying to do that without success because they've been doing it part-time, piecemeal. And that your idea of having something in the city, long-term, that will really do that job for us and with us, is critical. And that has been being talked about for years by people from the community, by myself, by people that I know, by people in the schools, people in community organizations, Girl Scouts. This is not a new idea that came from any other organization or any other party. It's something that we need and that we want. And as far as the plan goes, I don't know that much about comprehensive plans and how much they're supposed to cost. I didn't particularly like the presentation that we saw, but I have elected you, all of you trust you guys, and I don't think, I've not ever felt personally myself or heard any kind of confidence issue with our city council. I think most people that I know that I talk to, which is a lot of people, agree that y'all are showing up and doing the work you need to do, and doing the hard things that have been neglected and not done and put off in this town for a long time. And I applaud you for sticking your necks out when it may not be easy to do those difficult things, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keenan. Yes?
Hi, Tracy Lassiter, 6020 North Street, 75965. I wanted to tackle the steering committees because I figured nobody else was going to talk about it, and I was right. I just wanted to go into the unfortunate way those were formed. And let me also suggest that this is a prime example of why people just lack trust in the city and the city council. So from the get-go, the citizens of Nacogdoches have been pretty skeptical of the need for this whole process to occur in the first place. So to try to get everybody on board, you guys held forums back in June, ostensibly to get community feedback, but where you actually just spoke to us for an hour and then accepted comments for a little bit after that. But I think what you did was you pushed through what was not a popular idea. And to do that, you created committees full of community members so you would have diverse representation in the planning process. Even though many folks scoffed that this would be handled well, many of us did indeed submit applications to serve. Now, I knew I had a snowball's chance, but even I have to admit that shake, I mean, I was surprised when I saw these committees. There's nothing diverse about them. Let me make it clear that diversity is not just a skin thing. It is diversity of ideas. And these committees are completely stacked with like-minded people. So when you have a city council comprised of almost all progressives and an independent, what are you going to get when you allow them to choose committee members from the public at large? They're going to choose friends and people of similar liberal mindset to increase their own influence in the process. This shouldn't be surprising, this is just human nature. So we have to assume that you guys planned it that way, that you never truly intended to have truly diverse representation. Another reason that I think the deck is stacked and it's clear is you said you wanted representation from particular entities, Nedco, NISD, SFA. So let's use Nedco as an example. Steel Wright was chosen to represent Nedco. Cool. But wait, Ken Depish is also a chair at Nedco, as is Ed Poole, as you used to be, Mr. Mize. So that means Nedco has representation four different ways. And the same thing goes for SFA. The SFA rep is Carrie Charlie. Cool. But wait, Ms. Fields is the diversity director at SFA. Larry King is a professor at SFA, as is Brad Mall, or he used to be. Councilwoman Ballinger was a professor at SFA. So SFA is represented five different ways in the committee. So, I mean, I could go on with Nakai Steve, and I'm not going to, but it's the same thing there. The point is, if you do not have these entities triple and quadruple represented with your buddies, it would free up slots for community members who are not networked into the cliques. So if you did it the other way, freed up some slots for some true community input, then you would have actual diversity, diversity of thought. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just a few minutes, or we'll need to pause and start again later.
I don't have a script or anything, so, Mr. Mayor, I just appreciate you letting me talk.
Thank you, sure.
I am from the county, so I don't know if that matters or not.
No, sir, it's fine, you're naming your address.
Okay, great. A lot of it's accountability. And I look at, I'm a businessman, so I've been running a business here 21 years. So I look at the numbers, I look at your PowerPoints, and I go, what's bringing in the revenue? You know, what's the biggest targets? You know, taxes, things like that. What's going to produce the most for the city? And then accountability. Accountability goes to that outside organization that you're going to hire. They don't have any skin in the game, it's been brought up. So what happens is, once they're gone, what accountability do we have over them? So we have talent here. I know we've got lots of good talent, it's just people have to get along and look at what's, you know, establish a priority list. I do the same thing on my business. What brings in revenue this year? How has it changed? I look at taxes, I have to do all the same things. That has to be articulated here, and the city manager and where all the money's come from. Does that make sense? What are those targets? What are we targeting? What are the kids bringing here? Is it the school, SFA bringing the money? Is it the kids? Is it the tourism? Who's doing these plans to figure out what we're going to target in our priority list? We have to have the water fixed, we have to have the lights. I live in Apple Creek, and when the wind blows, you know, the power goes out. So I had to buy a generator years ago to have a stable lifestyle out there. So, understand it all, but what I see is, it's not a good business plan when I'm looking and seeing the PowerPoints, I'm not seeing the numbers. If you were doing a business plan and briefing somebody, you know, what are our targets? Why are those our targets? Does that make sense to you? And so that's what I like to look at as a citizen. Diversity and all that, I'm not going to get into. I don't want to, you know, come up here. I want to try to bring up positive things. As a businessman, can I look at all this? We have talent here, we have a lot of talent here in this city. Been here for a long time, and I don't care about who you are, male, female, genders, anything. It's, all right, what's the best thing for the American citizens of Nacogdoches to, you know, better the city and themselves? Right now, the country is a clown show. It's a circus right now, at the higher levels. We don't want to be at that level. Does that make sense? So we have to forge our own destiny, so to speak, but it has to be a business destiny, does that make sense? Socialism won't work. It just never worked. But how do we build a better person, better community? And I think we have the talent here, but again, it's going to be this group here figuring out the right people. Now, I volunteered for one of those steering committees, got on the internet, never got a response back. So I'm fine with that, and I take it, but there's a lot of, you know, there's, what kind of talent do we have? I mean, all the accounting talent, the bank talent, the real estate talent, these organizations, who's paying the bills? Who's bringing the money here that betters Nacogdoches that we can spend this money? Is that? All right, and it needs to be simple, for the common person that understands it, and you can do a business plan that quick on PowerPoint. I mean, kids do it at the college. And that's what the people need, and just prioritize your agenda, you know, life support first. So one of the things you brought up earlier, I didn't jump up, but your communications. Well, you already have schools out there, those are communication centers. What you do is you establish a little communication hub there, so if everything goes out, a person in that community where that school is can go there and get an information brief, and it's a distribution point as well. So I do emergency response planning and all that. So it's already a city-owned structure. The counties have the same things. So we need to get the right people in the right places, the right to make, you know, make the right decisions, and so that's my two cents worth. And so I appreciate you guys, your service up here, I really do. And I start neutral, does that make sense? I just kind of look and see, and I watch your decisions from here on out. You can't trust the paper here, it's kind of biased. And so, and I know a lot of people know that, but that's the problem, is we don't get informed. And so what I'm looking for you folks to do is to inform us, and I'll come here more often. I'm on my second career, getting ready to start a third. And what I want to do is kind of take more, I've only been here 25 years, but I want to take more, I guess, active role in the community here, so.
Thank you.
All right. Paul, last name is Howe, H-O-W-E, and it's 298 County Road, 2131. Is that good?
That is it, thank you, sir.
You take care.
Yeah, okay. We need to move on with our council meeting. We will close the workshop for now and move into our council meeting. If you'll give us about a, say, a 10-minute break, we'll start our council meeting. Thank you all for being here, and you're welcome to stay. Thanks, thanks to all of you for being here and for your interest. I just want to clear, on our workshop, since the council did not have the opportunity to deliberate and discuss in public, we will do that before our next council meeting, which is the 17th of September. That will not be a time for public comment, but will be a time for the council to discuss, and you to hear the council's discussion on whether to move on with the plan, not a vote, but just to move forward with the plan for a later, voted later date, or to do something else. So I've got, I've actually got meetings scheduled this week with different people to talk to. Be happy to talk to any of you one-on-one, and the other council people would as well, to learn more.
Mayor, let me make one correction, I'm sorry. You said 17th, and I agree with you, that's a Friday, so that would be September 21st.
Okay, sorry about that, September the 21st. But again, we value your input. One thing that sticks vividly in my mind is that our town is changing. All you have to do is drive down to the Loop and South Street, and you can tell it's coming. I-69 is coming, and it's going to change things. And so I just, I just want to be prepared for that change and not just let it, let it happen to us. So anyway, enough commentary. But again, that's, that's the plan. We will reconvene for the council discussion on September 15th. That's, I'm sorry, I messed up again. September 21st is a Tuesday, and that will be at 4:30 on that date? For the workshop?
We can do it 4:30 and just leave it to that, just one item.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you again for being here, and we will begin the regular agenda for the council meeting. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is open forum, and that is to speak to issues that are not on the agenda tonight. There will be time for issues on the agenda. But if you had something like, you got a cat in the tree or something like that that we could help you with, this would be the time to talk about that. So anybody signed up? Okay, thank you. Okay, then the next thing is our consent agenda, and that would, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Bowlen, motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second, Ms. Ballinger, any discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no discussion? Those in favor, sing, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that passes. And then we will move into the regular agenda, and we will consider, A, public hearing, consider a specific use permit for liquor-by-the-drink for lots 30, 49, 49A, and 49B, and out lot 47A, City Block 43, as described in a deed dated July 17th, 2020, recorded in document number 2020-4460 of the real property records of Nacogdoches County located on the southwest corner of Bremont Street and West Main Street. This request has been submitted by Brent Ivy of Ivy Gott Property LLC, case file SUP 2021-03. The planning director will present this.
All right, thank you, Elena Hilton, city planner. The proposed specific use permit is for an indoor/outdoor bar and food service establishment with a proposed outdoor recreation area as well as accommodations for local food trucks and live entertainment. This SUP- SUP was first heard by City Council on August 17, and during that meeting, the neighbors to the west, Mr. and Mrs. Hooper, they reside at 715 West Main, they did express concerns specifically regarding the potential noise for the outdoor activities and outdoor live music. And in response, council moved to postpone the public hearing to this evening's meeting to allow staff, the applicant, and the neighbors to come together, to come to a compromise, to mitigate any impacts from the noise that could affect the neighbors. And so we did coordinate that meeting with the applicant and Mr. and Mrs. Hooper, and Ms. Linda Stamp as well, and Councilman Anderson was also in attendance. And we did come up with some additional conditions that we'll talk through during the remainder of the presentation that have been agreed by all parties. And so with that, we will move on. As a recap, for the information that was presented in last month's meeting, the property, subject property is zoned general business and light industrial. It is currently vacant. The area consists of a mix of zoning districts and land uses, including commercial and industrial development, as well as a number of single-family residences that are located along West Main Street. The property is located, the property located immediately south is vacant, but was previously developed as an industrial use, taking direct access to Bremont Street. The future land use plan designates the subject property and the surrounding area as single-family residential with property to the east designated as rural development, and this rural designation is due to the proximity of the property to Benita Creek and that significant floodplain that's in the area. So while the future land use designation is not consistent with the current zoning of the property, however, it is consistent with the land use policies that are outlined in the 2003 comprehensive plan. Specifically, these include considering and minimizing potential negative land use impacts, maintaining compatibility with existing uses, and then additionally promoting buffers between residential and commercial areas. So while the future land use plan is not consistent with the proposal, staff finds that it is otherwise in compliance with the comprehensive plan, as it does support those land use policies that we just described. Again, approval of the specific use permit does not change the current underlying commercial zoning of the subject property. All right, so with the applicant's initial proposal, it includes an indoor and outdoor bar and food service area. The bar and food service area that's highlighted in blue on the exhibit, the enclosed area would be about 1,500 square feet, including a 2,500 square feet covered outdoor seating area. The applicant also proposed a small open-air stage for live music, and that was initially proposed on the southeast corner, and that's highlighted in pink on your screen. That's a 13 by 13, just open-air area. The applicant also included approximately a 2,000-square-foot outdoor recreation area that would include games such as cornhole washer starts, things of that nature, but wouldn't include any kind of seating area. The applicant also intends, again, to accommodate local food trucks on the property, and the proposed operating hours are between 11:00 a.m. and then 10:00 p.m. weekly. The applicant's initial proposal also includes preserving the existing large trees and vegetated area along the southern and western boundaries of the property. Those are indicated by that green color that you see on the exhibit. And this area ranges between 30 and 70 feet, and just includes preserving the existing trees that would really accommodate more of a buffer than what the city's current screening standards would accommodate. As stated, we did coordinate a meeting between the applicant and the Hoopers who live to the west to address their concerns that they specifically expressed at the August 17 meeting, those associated with the outdoor music from the live entertainment. In response, the applicant is proposing to modify their site plan to shift that stage area north, so that the stage area is actually positioned on the east side of the bar building, immediately adjacent to it. This change positions the bar between the stage and the neighbor's property, thereby creating a physical barrier, reducing the noise impacts, so that noise from the stage area would be produced north, east, and west, but wouldn't actually be produced to the west and would be blocked by that building, adding some additional protections for those property owners. And so just to show you a side-by-side of the change, the only change to the actual site plan is the location of that stage area, whereas before it was kind of catty-corner to the outdoor seating, so it was open, and the live music would be able to travel unobstructed. Now that stage area has been shifted, so there will be that physical barrier to reduce the noise impacts. So on the left is the previous proposal, and on the right is the new proposal. In addition, the applicant is also proposing to impose the city's noise ordinance as it relates to the neighbor's property to the west. The standards found in our noise ordinance apply to commercial development when it's adjacent to residentially zoned property and has restrictions that are designed to protect those residential areas from noises that are created by those commercial businesses. And because the property to the west is actually zoned commercial, these standards wouldn't normally apply, but the applicant has proposed to impose those as a way to mitigate those impacts that we're expressly concerned by the neighbors, so that if there is an issue, that staff can actually go out and measure those and enforce them accordingly. These are some subject property photos that we took just a couple of weeks before the actual peenzy meeting. At the lower, the upper right-hand corner, you can see the property standing at West Main Street, facing into the property. You can see that existing vegetative buffer that we described just a minute ago. On the lower right-hand corner, that's the view of the property facing or standing on Bremont Street. And then the lower left-hand is actually standing on the property where that new parking lot will be, facing north. So again, we did mail 11 notices to property owners within the 200-foot notification area and did receive two responses in favor of the request. One of those from the Hoopers was rescinded during that August 17 meeting. During the meeting that we had where we imposed the additional conditions, they did express their support. I'm not sure if they're in attendance this evening.
I thought I saw Mr. Hooper.
If they are, we would invite them to speak during the public hearing portion. But we did walk away from the meeting with some consensus on these new imposed conditions to, that everyone could agree upon. On your screen, you'll see the criteria that council must consider when reviewing these types of requests. Based on the findings that we outlined in the staff report, and those presented during this evening's meeting, we do recommend approval of the specific use permit. And this item was also heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting on August 9, where they also recommended approval unanimously. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. And I know the applicant is in attendance and would like also to address the council. So at this time, if the council has any questions, I'll take those, or we can defer to the applicant.
I think we'll defer to Mr. Ivey.
All right, thank you.
Brent Ivey, 6140 FM 698, Nacogdoches. As Elena said, we did meet with everyone last week. I think part of the reason I wasn't in attendance personally last time, I didn't get to talk to the Hoopers beforehand, and I think there was some misunderstanding about some stuff that was published in the newspaper that kind of highlighted the potential of a nuisance for music when that was something that was never intended to do, because we'd previously talked to them, because we want to be a good neighbor. And that was kind of the consensus I got from the meeting, is that we want to be good neighbors with the people who live around there. We think it's a good expansion for this town, and for going up West Main. It's a new place for people to hang out, and it's going to be family-friendly, which it's hard to find a place to take kids to where they can go run around and do stuff. So if you guys have any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to answer, and I'd like the opportunity to respond if anybody else has something else to say.
Sure.
I have brought some people to speak on behalf, but I don't intend to do that. If no one else comes against it, then I'm not going to waste any more time. I won't call them to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Okay. Counsel, any comments? Mr. Anderson?
No, I participated in the meeting between the concerned citizens and Mr. Ivey and with Elena as well, and it went very well, and I think all the concerns were put to rest, all the Hoopers and Stumps' concerns, and everybody seemed to have left pretty satisfied with the outcome, I believe, so.
Great, great. Thank you for doing that. Ms. Bellinger?
I just have one question. Has the special use permit changed in any way as a result, or is it the same identical permit?
It's the same plan. The site plan exhibit that you see has been modified for the stage area, and we've also imposed the noise ordinance.
So that's part of the special use permit?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's very helpful, even as we move forward, if they, if you sell the property or anything later down the line. I really appreciate that, being the thoughtfulness for the use later on also.
Mr. Bowden? I'm sorry. Hold on just a second. Let me, Mr. Bowden?
Just, if all parties are in agreement with the changes, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I agree. I do appreciate the collaboration and cooperation, working it out, and you leading that group. Thank you. There was a question, I think?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't know.
I'm sorry. Would you please?
My name's Carol Eaton Walsh, and I live on 416 and 404 and 400 Bremont. I mean, those are my old houses. And I just, I didn't get to, I didn't know about the meeting, and I just wanted to ask some questions about the children's play area. I'm all for something nice being at the end of the street, but I was just curious.
Great, good. Thank you. That's good. Mr. Ivey, would you come and tell us about that? Your plans?
So if you look on the map, the yellow area, you have for parking and capacity, you have to, where there will be a TABC barrier where people can consume alcohol, there has to be a measurement there. That's why we chose that location. There will actually be a, there will be a fence around there to where it's going to be a large green space where kids can, there may be some playground equipment where kids could play soccer or balls and stuff, but it'll be a fenced-in area to where nobody's going to be able to get out and crawl into Fred and Kay's backyard or run out into Main Street. There will be a protective fence there, so it won't be where people will just be running wild. But just a place where you can come and sit and hang out, where you can see your kids out there playing. That's kind of the general idea.
Thank you, sir. Okay, counsel, do I have a motion?
I move to...
To approve?
To approve, thank you.
I'll second. Second, Mr. Anderson. Any more discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And then I need to close the public hearing. Is that right? Okay. All right. And so we'll move to the next public hearing and open a public hearing and receive citizen input on the fiscal year 2021, 2022 proposed budget. Ms. Carbo.
Mayor, council, it's me again. Tonight, we're going to take another look at the proposed budget. We've had a couple of workshops over the last month or so. Tonight, we're going to open up for, well, citizens have had input on those other two workshops, but this is the actual public hearing for the budget tonight. Just as a reminder, the budget is based on a proposed tax rate of 61.6 cents per $100 valuation. Of that, operations and maintenance component is 53.371 cents, and the debt component of 8.229 cents, which generates additional revenue of $553,000 for the city for the next fiscal year. There are no fee schedule changes proposed in this budget. That includes water, sewer, sanitation, and the street maintenance fee. The general fund budget, this is just a very high-level look at what our proposed operational revenues and expenditures are for the next year. 27, a little over 27.4 million in revenues and operating expenditures, and about $2 million in proposed capital expenditures, which is being purchased out of the reserves. It's not an operational expense for our capital items. This budget is, there was a couple of slight changes that we've made since the last time that we talked about the budget. Only in the general fund, there were no changes made to any of the other funds, but in the general fund, we have adjusted the reserve capital expenditure amount for the comprehensive plan and downtown master plan to the total of $450,000 based on the bids that had come in on that. And we also adjusted revenue for the comprehensive plan, reflecting a $50,000 contribution from Nedco potentially, and a $50,000 transfer from our Economic Development Fund, so that the general fund bottom line is $350,000 net expenditure for that. We also made one other small change, and that was no additional monies. We just split our building inspections department and code enforcement. They were previously one-budgeted line item department, and now going forward, as of October 1, they will be two separate departments. And so, there was no changes in funding, just splitting it on your actual budget. On the utility fund, like I said, there was no changes in this. This is going to be as presented in the prior two workshops. You'll notice that the revenues, the proposed revenues are almost $20 million. This does not include any fee increases. And then, of course, our operating expenses, our debt service payments for our existing bonds, and then our capital expenditures there as well. Sanitation, same thing, no rate increases there, no changes from the prior budget presentations that y'all saw. Right at 6.8 million dollars in revenues, and then operating expenses and capital expenses as well. So with that, I will open up the public hearing, so that y'all can, and I'll be available for any questions.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to the budget? Yes, ma'am. Yes, please.
Sorry, I guess I just have a question about the $350,000 for the comprehensive plan. If that's approved in the budget tonight, then that seems to me it doesn't leave room for debate about that plan?
It would just be earmarked, but the action would still have to be taken on whether or not to do the plan. So, again, we'll have the public hearing, and then it would be, depending on how that goes, I'm sorry, the workshop, depending on how that goes, then there will be a vote at a later time if it got that far. But that does not mean that we're going to do it.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
It's Ginny, G-I-N-N-Y. Judson, J-U-D-S-L-N.
Thank you.
That crossed my mind, and I'm sorry I didn't mention it.
Okay.
Thank you for your question. Anyone else? Okay. So, counsel, questions and thoughts? Ms. Bellinger, I'll start back with you.
I don't have any questions and thoughts. And if we do earmark that, we always can change and earmark it for something else or whatever. So that is my point of clarification.
Verified by our city manager there, also.
And Pam. We have to have...
And Pam, yeah.
Sorry, we have...
Good. Mr. Bowden?
Yes, thank you, mayor. On the splitting of the building inspection and code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Are we still going to hire new code enforcement?
Yes, it doesn't change anything that was presented in the original budget workshops. It does include a full-time code enforcement officer for sanitation and two part-time code enforcement officers as well. So it doesn't change that. We're just pulling the code enforcement piece out of building inspections, so that we can reflect those two separate entities now.
I mean, the only reason why I asked that question was, maybe going into a different department, maybe there would be help already in that...
Well, they're not going into, they're not going into an existing department. We're just creating, coding, yeah. Code enforcement's going to be their own department now, yes.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Ms. Anderson, any?
No, no questions.
Come in, Mr. Anderson. Okay. So, I believe I'll close this public hearing, and then we'll, the next one is where we'll vote.
The next one, yeah, the next one.
Correct. Okay. We'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll take up C. Consider Ordinance of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas, approving and adopting annual budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing that said expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, unless otherwise authorized by an ordinance adopted by city council, providing for a repeal clause, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date.
So, this is the point after the public hearing, that y'all can vote to adopt the budget. If you anticipate no changes, then I would suggest, let's go ahead and vote to adopt the budget. Or you can always vote to, or make a motion to postpone the vote to the September 14 meeting, when we'll be adopting the tax rate. Now, this year's a little bit different, because we've separated on two separate dates. Normally, we'd adopt the budget and the tax rate on the same night. So that is always an option. The law just states that tonight, after the conclusion of the public hearing, you have to take some type of action on the budget. So it's completely council's call. If there's no anticipated changes, then there's no harm in adopting it now. There's no, nothing that ties it to next week, but if you want to vote on them both at the same night, you can do it next week, however you want to do it. But it does have to be a record vote if you do adopt... But it does have to be a record vote if you do adopt the budget tonight, so.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Carbo? No. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the annual budget as proposed for fiscal year starting October twenty, October first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say goodbye, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to D, discuss and consider adopting ordinance number eighteen seventy-eight dash oh nine dash twenty-one, amending chapter six, animals, article one, general provisions, division one, generally of the code of ordinances, city of Nacogdoches, Texas, to clarify ownership of abandoned animals and clarify that the animal control officer is vested with the authority outlined in chapter six, animal services manager. Hello, how are you?
Good evening, mayor, council members. Teresa Jordan, animal services manager. This topic has come up several times and it's recently, again, animal services has had issues with animals being left for prolonged periods of time at the shelter, and we don't currently have a specified timeframe where that ownership from a stray animal being surrendered or somebody surrendering an animal that doesn't belong to them automatically transfers over to the city of Nacogdoches, so we can adopt those animals out and get them into homes or do what we need to do to, to continue moving animals and, and serving our people. The ways we get animal generally is by people surrendering strays that they find in their neighborhoods. It can be through landlords and property owners who have tenants that vacate the property and leave animals behind. And we also have had issues where law enforcement has arrested somebody who had animals with them at the time of their arrest, and those animals are surrendered to the animal shelter by law enforcement while those owners are being taken to jail. Our most recent example of that, we had a few months back, a couple people that were arrested within a few days of each other, and five animals came to the shelter between the two people. Those occupied kennels for over a hundred days. That decreases the number of kennels that we have access to for operational daily routines. It also limits the number of people that we can help and animals that we can take in and, and keep moving and serving our community. So, during all of this, we consulted with Mr. Kirkland about what we can do to prevent this in the future, and coincidentally, he had attended a legal conference where that topic was covered, and the recommendation is to include a statement in our code of ordinances that specifies a timeframe where once that animal is surrendered to the shelter after a certain period, ownership is given to the city of Nacogdoches, and then we can adopt out or dispose of those animals as we see fit. So, what we did after that was research, what is the typical timeframe or the industry standard for a stray hold or a holding period for animals in shelters? And we contacted several shelters. We also researched municipal codes that are posted online and looked at what the general standards were, and the industry standard is basically three days. That's three business days is what we specified in ours because we want to make sure that people have every opportunity to come in and get their animals if they're missing, and we don't want them to be, you know, have two or three days eliminated by holidays and weekends. So, after that, we returned to Mr. Kirkland and he wrote up the revision in the code that stipulates a three-day timeframe where at, on the fourth day, if those animals are not claimed by their owners, then property ownership is granted to the city. He also, while reviewing this, recommended that we specify that the animal control officer is provided with the authority to enforce our chapter. And I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, maybe, we'll start with public comment. Anyone? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please.
My name is Ronald Lotte. I'm a veterinarian here in town. I have a business at four five two eight Appleby Sand Road. I really hadn't given much thought to this, but it, my immediate thought is that three days in a lot of legitimate situations may not be enough time. You would be far better to, to tell me how often this would be an occurrence, but there are a number of people who hire someone to come to their home and set their pets when they're on vacation, et cetera. If that pet has thunderstorm anxieties, digs out of the yard, somebody leaves the gate open, et cetera, and that dog disappears, those people may not even be back for three days. You see what I mean? As far as that, I absolutely agree, there needs to be a time set. I'm just not sure that three days is long enough when you consider some of those sorts of possibilities. I know I've had pets at my facility that were picked up off the street, had our rabies tag on it, et cetera, that we've kept for up to a week, waiting for the owners just to get back to town. The benefit was, we knew who they were based on their tags, and in a lot of these situations, you're talking about some different scenarios, I realize, but I just think if that's a, if that's a blanket across the board, three days might be a little bit on the short side for some of those scenarios. Just something to think about, it starts to open a box for problems there a little bit, you know, so.
Thank you for your comment, Dr. Lotte.
Chris Engler, County Road seven twenty-one. Three days, when I heard that, I thought, you may be looking for your pet for two days and haven't got over there yet. I would think seven or ten days would be fairer. I know that's a greater expense, but I think it would just be the heartfelt thing to do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Would, can you, any thoughts on that?
Yes, sir. In the situation where somebody's out on vacation and they have somebody tending to their animals, if that person calls and says, we're missing this animal, and it shows up at the shelter and those, those owners aren't going to be there for a few days, there's, there's contact with those owners. We can make arrangements to continue to hold that animal for a little bit longer time as long as they make contact with us. So, if that pet sitter is watching somebody's animals and that animal gets away from him, if they notify us during that three-day timeframe, we can actually accommodate that. It's just that housing animals for that long limits the number of animals that we can bring in. It also exposes animals to everything else coming in. So, it's, I understand Dr. Lotte's point of view, and I, I have no problem with housing an animal for an additional day or two if the owner is out of town and, and we're informed that that animal belongs to somebody and they're, they're going to take care of that as soon as they return.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Ms. Anderson?
No, no particular questions.
Mr. Bolden?
I do find the three days a short timeframe, but also, are we looking at like space and cost as one of the reasons behind the three days timeframe?
Space primarily. So far this year, we've taken in over two thousand animals. We have ten holding cages in our large dog run, and most of what we get is large dogs and cats. So, primarily, the problem is that those large animals take up that space and it fills very quickly. So, for our facility and for our staffing and that kind of thing, we thought that the three-day timeframe and following with some of the other shelters that are similar size and serve similar sized communities was appropriate.
Are most of the animal do you receive, or they have like a tag or chip?
Most of them do not, and we take animals in from the entire county, so it's not required to be registered or anything outside of the city limits. A lot of our, a lot of the animals that we get don't have any kind of identification. If they do, especially like in the example of the rabies tag, the rabies tag is stamped with a number, it's also stamped with the vet's contact information and their name. Anytime we get an animal that has a tag, that has any identif, any identifying information on it or has a microchip, there's a nationwide database where you can look at microchips online. We contact those companies, they send us the information over the phone, they give it to us over the phone, they also email it to us sometimes, and then we can contact those people. In some instances, they've kept the microchip information up to date, in other instances, they have not. So, we do our best to, we do searches on Facebook, we do searches in our general computer system just to see if we can find some information on that person and do our best to find the animals home and get it back to where it needs to be. So, most of the animals we get, though, have no identification.
On the average, how many days could you accommodate an animal before you run out of space?
We are full on most days. So, as animals are leaving, we're scheduling appointments to bring in more. We have so many staff, we can clear space, that's the last thing anybody wants to do because that's the most negative portion of our job, but if we have to make space for the animals that are scheduled to come in, that's what we do. And then we get those animals in for that day, and then we have the next day to have those animals on exhibit. They're being viewed by other people and hopefully adopted out. That creates space which negates the necessity for, for more euthanasia. So, we try to keep everything moving as smoothly as we possibly can.
Thank you. Ms. Bellinger?
How many times, in, in your experience, well, first of all, thank you for doing all this with all of our animals. That is just, we really appreciate it. But secondly, how many times do you think it might happen that we take ownership and do something with an animal that really was somebody's pet? If we, if we adopt this, how many times might we screw up? That's all I'm asking.
So, when I started at the shelter, I started here in two thousand thirteen, and there was a general shelter policy in place of that three-day stray hold. Nothing in writing, it's just general shelter operations. We have probably had less than a dozen over the eight years that I've been here where somebody comes in and says, that was my animal, but that's usually been a month or two months out where they see a picture of their animal that somebody shared, this is my baby now, that kind of thing, and then they come to us saying, well, that was my dog. So, it's usually even extending that timeframe potentially would not make that much of a difference in what we've seen.
Any difference, you think?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'd really like to know from Dr. Lotte if he thinks after hearing this, we should still extend, you know, extend the timeframe, just for curiosity.
Or maybe even begin with something seven, ten, and then you come back and see us in six months from now, and let's, let's see how that's working or if it needs to be shorter.
But I don't want animals euthanized either. I mean, because that's really what we're talking about either, you know?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, euthanizing.
I mean, there's that, there's that potential, and it may be that the animal that we choose that day belongs to somebody and they don't come in to claim it until after it's already done.
That's why I'm asking.
And that has happened.
Oh, it has?
Yes, ma'am.
Heartbreaking.
In terms of that, I mean, the discussion has been much better. I appreciate the additional information about some of the things that happened. My experience in multiple municipalities I've lived in is that there is no good solution. There's always going to be the potential for a problem, and if you haven't been to shelters to see what folks like Teresa have to do day in and day out, they're, they're in a practical, practically a no-win situation. So, I think you may just end up having to do what, what is necessary to a large extent. The responsibility, in my opinion, still falls back to the pet owner to make appropriate, you know, the plan for various contingencies, and if you're going to have a pet sitter or you put them in a boarding kennel, et cetera, have the tags on them, have the microchip, have instructions so that if that pet is not there, escapes or whatever, they know, okay, call the vet clinics in town, call the animal shelter. Seems like that would be fairly intuitive, but it's not always, especially when people are panicked.
Yeah.
But it should be, you know, and so, yeah, I think, again, after listening to the discussion, my, my immediate response is still that I think three days may be a little bit on the short end, but it makes, you make a great case, and I understand it.
Sure, yes, sir. Will you? Please, yes.
Wasn't planning to speak, but my name is Tanya Kelly, one zero seven seven nine, south FM two twenty-five. So, I'm on the board of the Humane Society of Nacogdoches County. I've been on the board for fifteen years, worked with Teresa quite a long time on a lot of different issues. Kind of piggybacking off of what Dr. Lotte said, there's a lot of things that happen when someone loses a pet, loses track of them, they get out, whatever. We get contacted a lot, Humane Society, and we immediately say, you need to contact the shelter, every single time, without a doubt. We get notified on our Facebook page, we get notified by phone call, the Humane Society does, and we always direct them, you need to go and contact the shelter immediately. So, I just wanted you to know that that communication is in place. Furthermore, there's a whole cadre of us animal folks in the community, not just Humane Society, but there's NAC fosters and a bunch of other foster groups that are pretty much always trolling the lost and found of East Texas dogs, and anyone that pops up for Nacogdoches, we're like, get to the shelter. So, we're directing them there, there's a lot of communication there, we're catching a lot of them, just all the people that are, you know, with Humane Society and NAC fosters and other foster groups in the area, we're catching a lot of these constantly when we are monitoring these pages where people says, my dog got out and da, da, da. So, we direct them quickly, like you need to physically go there as soon as possible. We try to encourage that. We share the information about the times they're open, and we give them the phone number as well. So, there's, like Dr. Lotte was saying, there's a lot of opportunity. I mean, you really have to almost just about nowadays, with all the communication vehicles in place, have just abandoned your animal completely or not followed up when they got out, or you went on vacation and you didn't really have a good, strong plan in place. And that could mean that your person that's taking care of them isn't doing a good job. So, that's important for the owner to, to completely vet that person that's watching your animals and make sure you have those contingency plans in place. Microchipping, there's so many ways, and then having a vet. All the things that we do with spay and neuter, we're helping get animals microchipped now. We're doing, a lot of our, our money is going towards, you know, once we got that vet un, that animal under for spay and neuter, like get a microchip too. So, we're encouraging that as well. So, I, I feel like, I, I mean, it's, it's a no-win situation. You know, to me, three days would be enough, but, you know, I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that there's, there's really just a lot of communication vehicles in place that are supporting what, what Teresa is wanting to do.
Thank you for what you do and for your opinion, we appreciate it. Okay, counsel? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Gen. Item seven D, I think it is, seven D, as it is written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say goodbye, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to E. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Regular agenda, receive report, hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation annual report. Economic Development Director, Teresa Philpott.
Mayor, um, Board Chair...
Oh, thank you.
Our Board Chairman, Robert Flores, is going to get us kicked off.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Flores. I'm the Chair of Nedco, Nacogdoches Economic Development Corp., and I would like to go ahead and present the annual report to the board. Thank you for inviting us here today to give this report. We look forward to discussing some of the items that Nedco has been doing this past year, and then some of the things that we look to do the following year. I'll begin by stating that when you look at economic development, part of it is not just our community, but it's also the surrounding area within the community. You can't just focus on, is this good for the city itself? We have to look at the county, we have to look at other enterprises within the, the economic zone to see, are we working well? And we also have to look at other areas like Lufkin, and what are they doing? I hear people all the time say, what do you really do it as economic development? Well, we have several things that we are charged with doing, and one of them is to promote, two is to assist, three is to stimulate, and four is to enhance economic growth. And what that really means is as we enhance, we want to develop and make employment opportunities for people that reside in this community, this area. So, the whole purpose to enhance or stimulate the economy or economics is to bring employment to Nacogdoches and raise our standard of living. When you do that, you're able to have a better school system, better healthcare system. All those things come together. One of the things that I'm listening to just this evening about the, the funding requirements of this city, we see that we're having to make really difficult decisions like the animal care because we don't have the funding to increase the facility and, and to increase the staff in order to take care of that. When you look at parks and recreation, all of those have to come back to a monetary value. I've spent my life in finance, and I understand the importance of measuring... I've spent my life in finance, and I understand the importance of measuring revenues against expenses. So today, or this evening, I'd like to quickly go over the importance of economic development and some of the numbers that that Nacogdoches looks at as we compare to other communities. Because we have to set that, those parameters before we really understand what NEDCO does in this community, and some of the restrictions we have because of the funding mechanism that we currently have in place. When you look at Nacogdoches as it compares, and I'll quickly go through this, and I apologize for taking a little more time. When you look at Nacogdoches, the city of Nacogdoches, we is represented by about 27 square miles. And you look at our friends across the river, Lufkin, they have about 33 square miles. So we have less in the city, but our county is larger. Our county is 981 square miles, and the county of Angelina is 864. Our density is a little bit greater here in Nacogdoches. But when you start going through, and I'm glad that you presented the the budget earlier because it gives me a chance to really focus on a key, a couple of key numbers that I think it's important that the City Commission looks at and thinks about as we look at economic development, and how much money you give NEDCO through your membership, and what we probably need to do in the future to be thinking about how we move forward with economic development. But if you look at the city of Nacogdoches in particular, and I want to quote some numbers as of the, with the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of 2019. And I apologize for not having more current numbers, but I did an analysis some time ago, and these are the numbers that I that I had to work with. If you look at the property tax revenue for the city of Nacogdoches, it's just a little bit over, in 2019, a little over $10 million. That's the revenue derived from the property tax. Lufkin had about the same number, which is interesting. I would have thought that their property tax valuations would have been greater, but it's about $10 million. But when you look at the sales tax revenue, which is really economic development as you're growing sales tax, our sales tax revenue was about $6.6 million during that time. Lufkin's was $14 million. The difference isn't in the sales, the sales did go up in Lufkin. We have about 660 million in sales during that year, and Lufkin had about 900 million, 930. But the real difference was that extra half percent sales tax that we do not get. And we all shake our heads and recognize that's something that we have to deal with in this community, where we only get a half, they get a half percent more at the city level, and a half percent more at the county level. But with those in place, we're, we know we're at a deficit. Now, Lufkin, they're a Type B Economic Development Corp. And in doing so, the city's able to dedicate a certain percentage of the sales taxes, sales and sales tax for economic development. They allocate 1/8 of 1%, 12 basis points. But 12 basis points on $933 million this year represented over $1 million for economic development. As you know, the city, in membership through NEDCO, has been allocating about $90,000. If we took the same 12 basis points on our 660 million in sales, we would be close to $800,000 that could be put into NEDCO. But we recognize, you don't, we don't have the money at the city because of that 1%. So we had to go back and look at business participation, industry to come in and help supply membership dollars to this activity. And as you know, our budget is about $320,000. Think about that, $320,000. And so when people question, what are we doing at NEDCO? We're mainly assisting. Of those four parameters I gave you earlier, promote, assist, stimulate, enhance, we can really only assist. So you're going to see in our report in a few moments, the majority of our time is spent trying to help the city, trying to help SFA, trying to help other, those other entities within the community, the county. And obviously, last year because of COVID, it was it was really extended trying to do certain things. So I just wanted to give you that that little bit of a briefing before we get started. And I and I hope those numbers make sense, and I'm more than happy to to expand on those later if you have any questions. But going into the actual report, you'll see that we're going to talk about several items. And I'm going to ask Scott Boyer, who is the Vice Chair, to come up and speak on a couple, and then Larissa will follow up with the remaining reports on the on the agenda. But we had major tasks and accomplishments this year. And we're going to be talking about the development of a flight program at the city that I know that you're aware of, at the city airport. We're going to be looking at the CARI, the Center for Applied Research and Rural Innovation that SFA has participated with in this community. We're going to look at how we administer the NAC cares for small business grants, development of the Hispanic Entrepreneurship Program, the Nacogdoches Restaurant Week, the Business Development Seminars, Job Fairs, COVID Response, the Snowstorm Response, advocacy and market, marketing plans. And I'd like to start with the Aviation Program. I know that you've probably been briefed on it in other past meetings, and many in the community have. But I want to explain how that came about, and how it's important that we we find synergy by bringing different entities together. For most of you that have been out to the airports, you recognize we have an airport that can service the community. We have one runway, we have one 5,000-foot runway that's 75 foot wide, feet wide. And it has some ground communication, very limited. But we're competing against other airports in the community, Lufkin in particular. We have Gregg County and others. But, and this is very limited resources, and we all recognize this, if you fly in and out, very, very limited. So the thought was, if we could bring, and at the same time, with SFA trying to grow enrollment and finding new programs to enhance enrollment and give students the opportunity to have a good education, it was determined, we need to look at an aviation program. But SFA couldn't do it on their own. They just did not have the ability to come come across with the the resources and the expertise to make it happen. So they were able to work with a local group of investors, as well as the city. And the city with the engineer, the planning with the airport, to come up with a solution that we could bring aviation as a training to SFA. The city would accomplish an ability to have more traffic through the airport and try to bring up not just the standard, but the the facility, as as well as a private enterprise that could help create an atmosphere. And at this point, it's been very, very successful. The goal was to have 20-plus students the first year. And the last count, that there were 23 registered, 21 were actually on campus, and two were held back because of COVID. So that that's been a first-year accomplishment. But we don't stop there. We have to measure and say, what was the benefit for SFA? What was the benefit for this community? And can we take that next step, which gets us to 50? And I just applaud SFA, and I know that that was a hard lift, knowing SFA and what's involved. I won't say the bureaucracy, but what's the challenge you have to go through to get there? And I know there's several people in here that spend a lot of time on it, and I applaud their their effort, as well as the private entity that came together. When you look at pilot and training and what their their earnings capabilities are, they're great out of college. You can start out at 50,000 plus, as you can tell, and it can go up to 80, 100. And a full-time commercial flight pilot with a few years of service can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's a great opportunity for a student, and other schools are doing it. But it gives us the opportunity to bring that to the to the community. You get a higher-earning alumni when you get finished with it. You also have additional activity at the airport. And our goal is to come off of that training and find other industries that want to come in. We we may have a power plant services there, airframe services there. We could have avionics repair there. So it brings additional talent to the airport that is going to be a higher wage of employment, and it's going to be a better benefit for the city. But we can't stop there. We have to continue to invest in that opportunity as long as it has a return. And I will stand here today and say, if we look at NEDCO with opportunities that are not positive, that are not a return on an investment, then I'll be the first one to say, we need to change course. Because we have to measure the resources against what the expense is. The next item I'll quickly go over is the CARI program that we've started developing at SFA about a year and a half ago. And as you, there was an article in KTRA on August 25th, and I'll quickly just skim through that, and you're more than welcome to go online and look at it. But SFA intends to use a $2.5 million CARES funding that they received, as well as a $900,000 state funding to launch this new resource, research center. And it's been termed the Center for Applied Research and Rural Innovation, and it's now being called CARI. And the new Vice President, the new Vice President, Executive Vice President, and Provost of SFA, Dr. Lorenzo Smith, has been kind of spearheading that activity. He is from the California area. His degree is in engineering, I think mechanical engineering in particular. And he has seen a vision to go out and have this innovation there on the old Indian River side around the loop on 259. This is just the start. This $3.5 million is pretty much, or 3.4 million is pretty much seed money. It's going to take additional funding, and we hope, as time moves on, we'll be able to advance that. And the and the whole part is to connect people together, entrepreneurs and industry leaders, to come up with innovative ways to help new businesses start up, existing businesses, if they have patent requirements, things like that, to be that one source area to get that information to help develop it. So we think from a economic development, it's going to be a win. But once again, that's a partnership with SFA. As we continue to focus on things in the community, it's very important that we stay open-minded. And as Larissa gives her points on the things that we've assisted during this time, and Scott gets up and talks about things that happened during the COVID, please understand, we're in a learning. We're learning every day as we move forward. But I tell people all the time, if you're not growing in a business or in a city, you're dying. And if you like to stay status quo, you may be fine for the short term. But then you have to start cutting services. You have to now, I'm so happy that we have a facility that is humane for animals at this point. But what would happen one day when we don't have the resources to fund that? And we have to go out to the private sector to try to make that happen. We have to continue to grow. We have to continue to grow economic development. When you look at things like apartment complexes and so forth in town, it's very important that we make the right decision if we bring people to the community. But we need to have those investments in the community because those are taxpayer dollars. And when you bring an industry in, and as that industry grows, and as that industry continues to build assets, those are assets are taxable. And if you bring retail in, there's sales tax dollars generated. So all those play together. But we have to be very careful how we promote economic development in this community. I always say, grow with quality, not quantity, grow with quality. If you do, we'll be able to sustain it, we'll be able to keep this community as we love. It'll be safe, it'll be great, and we'll love to live here. So with that, I'll ask Scott to come up and talk about the couple of items that he has on the agenda as well. So thank you, and I'll be, I'll stay here and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Counsel, for having me today, and and for Robert. You know, there's, one thing's been on my mind the whole time I've been sitting here, is one word, it's passion. And we got a lot of it in this town. And part of my passion, a huge part of my passion is small business. And through NEDCO, I've been able to kind of lead the entrepreneurship program and some other specific areas. One we want to mention is the NAC cares. The city was, through the CARES Act, was granted some money for small business and for development. It was the, it needed a way to facilitate that money. And patterned somewhat after the PPP program that that most of you are familiar with, certain of us very familiar with, where we had some criteria to help small business that showed a decrease in revenue from during COVID, or were under an executive order to shut down, like some of our restaurants and gyms and things like that. And so through a group of bankers at NEDCO, we processed about 66 applications, awarded $205,000 to small businesses, many of which, if you just opened that door right there, you could see with your own eyes. It really, I think, was very impactful for the community during a really difficult time. Second, that I want to highlight is our entrepreneurship program. And you want to talk about passion. There's no more passionate people in the world than small business owners. And we've seen this through the four, five years that we've run this program. And but we saw a need, where there was really a need for one of the fastest-growing areas in our community, and that's our Hispanic market. So many of our businesses, Larissa could probably tell you exactly the number or the percentage, are Hispanic-owned. And so we saw a need. One of our classmates in several of our entrepreneur programs was a Hispanic gentleman who was very involved, and and he kept telling us, hey, there's, I can get some of my friends here. You know, there's people that need this. And so we found a place at Sacred Heart that we thought was a good neutral site for, to make everyone, break down some barriers there, and put a great program together. Mario facilitated that, Amelia was there too, we had several bankers. And we knew we had what we needed to do. And two people showed up. And so you might take that as defeat, but we knew, sitting there, that we had something that was really good. We, and Armando and others told us, like, just no one knew about it. You didn't, you know, we didn't reach the right places. And so through the very people that we were trying to help, Spanish, the Spanish newspaper stepped up, radio, other entrepreneurs, the church. And we did it again, a couple of weeks later, 12 people, a couple of weeks later, 20 people. And it was tremendous, you know, I'll leave you with one story about it because we covered things like banking and accounting and things. And we've spun off a complete financial literacy class that we're about to start just based off of what we know people that need. But I'll leave you with one story. There was a lady, it was very passionate. Unfortunately, I couldn't understand a lot of what was was being said. But you could tell the passion was there. And and at the table, she had, she said something, she had a tear in her eye. And and one of our panelists was able to kind of talk to her efforts. And her thing was, she was so almost upset that just knowing what her business could have been if she hadn't spent 10 or 15 years not knowing any of these things. And and just what she missed out on because of the lack of this type of program. And so we feel like this is something we're going to definitely continue. I think it's very beneficial because this is a huge piece of our of our growing community. And it was just one of the things that we wanted to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you to Scott and Robert for covering those first couple of items on the agenda. I'll talk just real briefly about some of our other initiatives. I apologize, Larissa Philpott, you're Economic Development Director and the President of NEDCO. We had our first annual restaurant week. I've talked a little bit about this to you before. This was a big deal to us to support our restaurants this year. They had a really hard year in 2020. NEDCO very much supports tourism and quality-of-life initiatives, and this touched just about all of our initiatives. We had at least 29 participants. Some didn't register, but participated anyway, and so we were glad they were there. You can see, we had just a little bit of everybody participate, and it was great. Speaking to some of our local restaurants, they said they did have increased foot traffic, they had increased brand awareness, people tried places that they hadn't tried before. And so we're excited to do that again. As the President of NEDCO, I selfishly am excited that we now have a direct line to those restaurants. We have emails and phone numbers and contacts, and they're in Mary Frances Bradford's contact list. And so they get regular checkups and phone calls so she can kind of help problem solve with those businesses. We hosted, as you can see here on the list, a bunch of business development seminars. Mary Frances organizes those with our friends at the Chamber of Commerce. The way it kind of works is is the NEDCO folks come up with the with the idea based on what our businesses need. And the chamber helps us get that word out to their very large membership. Coming up in September of 2021, they'll be covering constitutional carry in the workplace. So you can see on that list, we're not afraid to tackle hard topics. We're here to give information. I believe Bill Kennedy with the Police Department will be helping us facilitate that. We're not here to to attack any political issues, but to simply provide information for our businesses to respond to any maybe new regulations that are out there. We have worked, of course, on emergency response in 2020 and 2021, who didn't? We had a huge increase in our social media engagement, and that was mainly to support our local businesses, to help them provide information to our residents when they were open, how they were open, how to reach them. We were a critical communication line between local businesses and the government during points of crisis. During the snowstorm, Mary Frances and Haley in our office made more than 300 calls in one week from their houses with no electricity. They they did a lot of communicating with our businesses. We helped the Public Works Department communicate with our critical industries to make sure places like Eaton Power could come back on quickly during that that very important electrical incident. Just a lot of general problem solving and crisis communication. And this is difficult for me to quantify for you, but just know that Mary Frances makes very regular calls. That's that's her portion of, her dedicated part of NEDCO is to make those regular touches with our businesses to see what problems they're having and and what issues we can help them with. We facilitated some VIP tours, which used to be large groups of folks traveling through our, visiting our major industries. We've scaled those back, and this year it was just myself and Mario, visited some of our major employers. But they were all successful visits, and we were able to to fix some issues for some of those folks. We have a job fair coming up on September 16th at the Rec. We have a job fair coming up on September 16th at the Recreation Center from 9:00 to 3:00. I bring that up to say that we have a lot of jobs open in the community. We have essentially, from a statistical standpoint and an economic standpoint, recovered. Now, I'm not saying that we as a, as a city, and we as every resident of our city have recovered. But when you measure sales tax, when you measure job growth, things like that, we have plenty of jobs out there, and our, our employers are looking to hire. So this is just one of the many things we do to facilitate that. We work on advocacy. This is a constant process of letter-writing and visits and phone calls. This year, we participated in virtual fly-ins with our federal and state representatives. Mayor Mize was able to sit in on one of those, I believe, with Louie Gohmert, with Representative Gohmert it was. It's important that we continue advocating for transportation funding. I-69 is a incredibly large project, and we can't lose hope. We can't lose focus. And so we continue to remind our legislators on both the state and federal level how important that transportation funding is. You can see here, we had a pretty successful year for that. It's also important, when we do those, those visits, that we're reminding folks, we are in Nacogdoches. We are a small town in East Texas, but we're an important town in Texas. And so it's nice to get our faces in front of them, so they don't forget about us. I include these in your packet every year. These are just some general indicators. These come from the American Community Survey, which is updated on a five-year basis. So these numbers, for example, from 2018 would be 2013 through 2018. I included the most recent data, so they haven't included the numbers through 2019 yet, for example, for this. But you can see, for example, our median household income, while it's not where we want it to be, at $43 and a half, $43,000, it's getting better. If you look back to 2010, we were about 67% of the state average. So we're getting better there. Our goal, of course, is to be higher than the state average with, with that number, but we'll get there eventually. Our poverty level is declining. That's, that's good news. I'm hopeful when the next year's numbers come out that that will be an even better number. Fingers crossed with that. Our unemployment has done incredibly well throughout the pandemic. It was higher than we wanted it to be, of course. But when you look at the state and national averages, we, we retained a large portion of our employment, and that, that was a great thing for us. And that's probably reflected in our increased sales tax for the year as well. Our workforce, we have maintained a positive workforce growth. Over the last year, we had a little bit of a blip in 2020, obviously, but, but have come right back. And you see, we have recovered to almost 2019 levels. Sales taxes, my favorite slide. We are up 22% over 2015. That is a great number for us, especially when you compare it, that to the state of Texas, which was, sorry, I can't move that cursor there. That says 18.4%. So, moving on. Our major tasks for the upcoming year, these are based on input from the Nedco Board and Executive Committee, and also kind of drilled down in a meeting with Mario and our mayor and Robert, our board chairman. Of course, continuing to develop prospects in our targeted industries. That's always one of our, one of our major goals. That will specifically drill down, more specifically this year, into identifying very specific parcels, obtaining permission to market those parcels. As you know, Nedco doesn't own property in Nacogdoches. A lot of economic development corporations do and are able to, to market industrial parks, and we can't do that. So we have to do this kind of pre-market step where we say, Mr. Bolden, you own 80 acres on the West Loop. We feel like that's prime for industrial development.
I'm very rich.
Do, right? And so you are a very willing property owner, but, but that might, might not always be the case. And I need that answer before the industry comes to us or before I go to the industry. I can't wait for that negotiation period. That slows us down more than most prospects are willing to go. Workforce development continues to be something that we work on. We're excited about the developments at the high school. We're excited about the developments of Kari. I think that those, both of those will help. I do believe there will be somewhat of a, a small gap in that middle of folks who have graduated from high school, folks who maybe aren't quite fully suited to attend a program at Kari, more vocational-type training. And I know that that was on the City Council's list as well, that list of priorities. Downtown development, really getting very, very specific about what that means this year. Our, our top priorities are really attacking the story, right building next door, and assisting the Bright Foundation and whatever we can do to get that done. We have a plan of attack. I won't bore you all with those details right now, but just know that's, that's going to be our highest priority. Entrepreneurship, continuing our major successes with that. We would like in the future to, as Scott said, work on a financial literacy class that our area bankers are working on. And also possibly expand that program into more affinity groups. So possibly have a veterans entrepreneurship class. And things like that, that would help increase attendance at those classes. Project facilitation just means me working with prospects and, and potential businesses, holding their hand as they go through the development process. We have a phenomenal development staff here at the city. They are very busy. And they could always use an extra set of hands and ears and eyes to hold the hands of developers as they go through the process and to try to kind of maybe slow down and explain exactly what our processes are. We don't have burdensome codes. We have a very responsive staff. It's just being able to communicate that to our developers and make sure that they all understand, we want them to be here, and we want their businesses here. Airport development, I'm very excited about that, about the future of our airport. As I said, Nedco doesn't own property, but the city happens to own several hundred undeveloped acres at the AL Mangum Jr. Regional Airport. I think that is ripe for development. One of our targeted industries is aviation. We do have some utility base out there, and thank you to the City Council for the utility extensions you're providing for HCH that will allow for future development. So now it's a matter of marketing it to the right businesses and the right industries to continue to grow out there. And then also looking at our funding. As, as Mr. Flores has mentioned, we're somewhat hamstrung by, by our limited funding. And so getting creative in how we continue to fund the activities that we do and the activities that you give us to do is important to us. And I'll end by just saying that, I think I probably say this every year, but just as a reminder, and this goes along with what Mr. Flores said, is Nedco's job is not to create jobs. We employ two people, three, three positions. One of them is vacant. Our job is to facilitate an environment in Nacogdoches where jobs are created easily. And so we're here to help answer questions. We're here to be an advocate. We're here to be a neutral party between the city and developers. We're here to be a cheerleader. We often say sometimes, these businesses just need attention. They just need a hug, and they need someone to say, we want you to succeed. How can we help? And any one of the 10 minor tasks that we deal with on a daily basis might bring us the next bright coop. We just, we don't know what those are, and we've got to keep working on them. It's not us sitting in a, in an office making cold calls. I know that's what a lot of people think it is. It's really the minor things that we do every day that grows economic development. It's, it's the long slogs of working on a flight school. We've worked on that for about, I think, four or five years at this point. So they happen slowly, but when they do happen, they have a big impact. And that's really what we're focusing on the next, in the next year, is projects that have a high impact and a high return on what, on, on our community. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know we do have several Nedco board members here in the audience as well. And I appreciate their continued support of Nedco, and I know they'd all also be happy to answer questions as well.
I have one question. Mr. Flores? Is he still here?
Okay.
You spoke of students, and you had a goal, a written goal of 20?
Yeah, 20.
And you have 23 now in place? And, and you're looking at, you mentioned 50 as another goal?
They're steps. And then, it, it, at this point, we anticipate getting up to 100, I believe, is what the goal is. And, you know, please understand, which each, each step up, there's additional assets that have to be created, you know, purchased planes in particular. They felt like, in the beginning, there'd maybe be three planes for 25 students. Eight students per plane is, is the right functioning number. And, you know, keep in mind that you could have maintenance on one and issues like that. We also are going to need facilities at the airport to house those. So there is a growth component there. But once we get that, that program working, it brings more to the university. I won't say credibility, but more focus, that we have these programs that are outside of the norms for a lot of universities. I had the opportunity, early summer, to testify in front of the, the Texas State Senate on my appointment to the, the Regents there at SFA. And I heard it from more than one senator, oh, SFA, that's the best-kept secret in Nacogdoches. Well, guess what? SFA is really Nacogdoches. Nacogdoches and SFA are almost synonymous. So it tells you that SFA is that, Nacogdoches is that best-kept secret. Do we really want to be that? Or we want to be that quality place that people want to come, they can get a good education, and you see it growing? I didn't mention earlier that our airport, you know, I'm a licensed pilot, and I fly. And I've been discouraged many times when I've flown into communities that are comparable to Nacogdoches. An example would be Northwestern in Louisiana, comparable university, comparable city. Their airport is very nice in relation to ours. But we have a good airport. Don't get me wrong. I've been in some that you have to shoo the animals off to land. But we're, we're, we're better. But there's a lot of opportunities there. And when, and if you want to have the, the gateway in Nacogdoches where you have businesses come in, and you have the opportunity to maybe bring a, a athletic team to SFA to compete, and we have an airport that we can land a mid-sized aircraft, and it has some facilities, that puts us on the map. It lets people know, Nacogdoches is a great place. But we have to come together. Business has to be here. The, SFA has to be here and the city. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of time. I hope I've answered your question, or you may have a follow-up question that I need to answer.
Yeah, my, my question was going to be is, if there was going to be, or if there are obstacles, like facilities, expertise, funding, you know, to delay that goal of 50 maybe?
Well, let's hope not. And I, and I didn't, I didn't intend to go into this, but I will briefly. Part of an airport funding comes from Tech dot Aviation. It's a state program that is funded partially by the FAA out of, with the federal government out of Washington. And you have to get on a list in order to compete for those funding dollars. Some of that expansion is 50-50 match, some of it's 90-10 match. In different years, there's different programmings. And so what we're trying to do is to get ourselves in a position that we can get the attention of Tech dot Aviation to say, we need some of that funding. Because think about it, if you get a match and you get on a, say, on a $2 million investment, you get a 90-10 match where several millions of dollars are coming outside of the community, that benefits the entire community. But we have to have a program. So having a growing program that we can go and say, we need an airport that has better facilities, that are larger, that has certain, the runway needs to be expanded, things like that. We can get help from our partners in Austin. But we have to, like I said, if you're growing, people see that. If you're flat or you're dying, who wants to invest in a dying company? You're just not going to do it. So yes, I hope we don't outpace it. And, and, and our goal would be, is to watch the funding with the anticipated needs and make sure we stay in front of it. We don't want to commit to more than we can. But it's going to be a heavy lift, but there's several people in this community, several entities and groups that are willing to help. There's even private monies that can come in to help with that additional funding at the city level. All we need to have is the vision, the plan, and the opportunity, and we'll make it happen.
And expertise also?
We can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Ms. Bellinger?
I really, have, have you finished the whole presentation or?
Yes.
Right this, okay.
Yes.
I just personally really appreciate the entire presentation. I have to tell you that when I was running for this spot here, that I heard so many things about Nedco. And I, I was just amazed at all the different kinds of things that I heard. I had to do a lot of research on my own, just to learn about it and come to a meeting and see what was happening. And I really think Nedco may be a, a, a good secret that our community doesn't really understand. I think we really need better communications, and I appreciate this effort to bring that communication. I also want to add one other thing. I think all, almost all good things I have ever seen accomplished, major good things, have been done through collaboration. And I, I can see all the collaboration that's been done over the past year with Nedco, the collaboration for small business owners, both with the Hispanic-Latino community. And I, if I remember, aren't we doing this now with the African-American community? I thought we were going, Nedco was going to.
Well, they're, they're, they will at some point move that direction as well, yes.
Because I know that's a, a very, it's very difficult for people to start businesses and understand what they need to do, understand what specific skills they need to have to have a business, and what a wonderful opportunity that is.
Well, Larissa pointed to workforce development, and that, and that's been on a discussion point for several years. And if you look at this community, if I could say one of, or not just our community, but several communities, workforce development is a real problem in a lot of communities. Because you do, you get students that come out of high school, they either go to, you know, higher education, or they go into the workforce. And so many, so many jobs now require a skilled person, you know, be computer literate. They have to be certified for forklift training, all those things. And welding, electrical plumbing. And so if we had the, a facility that we could work through that'll allow us to educate students or individuals, not students, but, you know, 20-plus years of age and get them employed, then they, the whole community benefits. But the longer we wait to get workforce development in play, the more difficult it's going to be for our community. Because you can't bring industry companies in to, and the first thing they ask is, what's your employment look like? Because we're going to need 50 individuals. Well, if we bring them in, but they have to take 50 individuals from another industry, now they're going to suffer. So we have to develop a workforce, and that's going to be key this year, that we focus on it and put action or start having some communication to say, how do we get a facility? How do we get people trained with the educators there? And what kind of assets will they need to make that happen? And it's something the entire community should get behind, because that hits all groups of individuals. And we're not going to limit it to men, female, the different races. It's going to be to educate someone to be employed, to provide for their families. And that's key.
And, and are we working with small business loans also?
Yes, yes, yes.
I think I had heard that, not in this report, but.
And, and we're more than happy to come back and give additional reports if you would like. And I was going to end by stating, if any time one of the council and/or individuals here in the group or the community have questions about Nedco or have suggestions or just would like to know things about it, please let us know. We would like to be known as an entity that is here to support the community and not just be one of these shadow-type groups that's set in the background. It's very important that we, you know, I heard, you know, communications earlier about the certain number of Nedco members that were part of this comprehensive plan. And that hurts when that happens, because the goal is to support each other. And when we find, find ways to find a vision, and I, and I don't think that was uncalled for, those comments, because it makes me and others think, we need to be out in the open having good conversations to advance ourselves in this community. Because if we succeed and put in the right infrastructure, and we get the city the right resources to provide sewer, water, and all the necessary services, but all those extra things, and we're talking about parks, and we're talking about museums, those are places that people want to spend their time at to enjoy life. And so we need to do all that. And economic development is a key to making that happen, in my opinion.
I have one other question. Or, or is everybody from the public welcome at your Nedco meeting?
Yes, yes. More than happy to, you know, the members, we meet on the second, I think, is this first, second?
Second Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, more than happy. Welcome to come in and hear it. And we would love to have more in the community, because if you recall, part of our revenue is through membership. So where I say "membership," directors within the, the organization. We need that. Now, I will also say, in the long run, we need to find a different funding mechanism for Nedco. If we're going to compete at the level we need to, with the size of our community, we need to have more funding than $300,000. And it's difficult to come in front of this commission and say, can you give us more money? When you look at the other needs in this community that you're having to serve, we can't do that. But we have to find additional sources of revenue. And I mentioned earlier, and I, and I hate to say this, when you look at multifamily housing, when you look at a facility, an investment of someone that comes into this community and puts in a 300 or 400-unit complex and spends millions of dollars doing that, if we plan it correctly and get that right housing facility in place, that could represent millions of fair or. that could represent millions of fair or, uh, taxable values that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars that we can then commit to our school district, to our city, to our county. It's a win-win. But, we have to be logical in how we promote economic development and get the right entities in play to have the best benefit. So, yes, you're welcome and it would, I'd love to get more information now on Nedco and what we're doing there. Any other questions?
Mr. Anderson?
Um, no questions for me. Um, I, you know, I, I'm one of the more fortunate for whom Nedco is not really a secret. I understand what it does and I understand how much effort and how much dedication board members, um, general membership, there are a number of them who have put a tremendous amount of time and effort and expertise into making it happen. And, um, this Phil Pot for her efforts and her expertise. And, uh, you've done it all on comparatively very limited, um, resources. And, you know, I guess to a certain degree, that may have forced some of the collaboration, which, uh, other, other economic development companies don't necessarily, um, have to, uh, to seek out, um, when they have more funding to work on their own. Um, but, uh, I, I also appreciate your comments on, on the need for additional funding because I absolutely agree with that, that notion and, uh, may take some creativity, but it, it'll be out there somewhere, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you. I've got one comment. Uh, Larissa, um, I'm, I'm excited about this project facilitation piece and you mentioned it. And I don't know if, I'd, I'd like for the public to kind of understand exactly what we're doing. I know when we, we hear at times when a developer comes to town, no offense, Elena, that, that the process could be cumbersome or, or maybe, uh, we, we could do better. So, tell me some about how that would work.
Sure, sure. I think what it boils down to is you don't, you don't know and understand development until you do it. And so, we have, um, for example, uh, you know, a new restaurant coming to town and, and they have, they need to, to climb their way through the development codes. I will say again, ours are very simple. Ours are very easy to understand, but if you've never, and our, our city attorney is nodding his head coming from the city of Houston. But, if you've never been exposed to zoning, it's a completely foreign concept. And so, if you've never been exposed to building setbacks and things like that. Um, Ms. Chafin is, is a, one planner shop with, with a technical assistant, hopefully more in the future. And so, just to provide some additional help to her to communicate with, with businesses. She can come to me and say, hey, we've got a pretty complex issue here and she and I can kind of work as a team to help, um, our businesses and our business community walk through those codes and regulations. At the end of the day, our goal is safety and to get these businesses built and remodeled and expanded. Um, we all have the same goal in mind. It's just sometimes it might feel like we're coming at cross purposes because the business's first goal is to expand and the city's first goal is safety. So, trying to make those two things meet in the middle is, is hopefully where I can help.
Great, thank you. I, I think that's a great way to handle that. Okay, if there's nothing else there, uh... Larissa?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mixed up.
F, consider the appointment of up to three members to the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Yes, sir. Um, as, um, the Nedco bylaws state, um, each member of Nedco, each dues-paying member, um, gets, gets a seat on the Board of Directors except for the city because you are an exceptional, exceptional member that pay an exceptional dues to Nedco. And so, you are allowed to appoint three members to the Board of Directors. Historically, that has been the mayor, the city manager, um, and one additional council member. So, you are permitted to appoint three and at that, I will open it up to the, to the mayor for nominations.
I have, uh, I, I have, would recommend that, uh, those be, uh, our city manager, Mario Canizares, uh, myself is the mayor. And then I've asked Roy Bolden to take that third spot. Uh, Roy, uh, you know, is the chair of, of our, uh, council of governments and certainly a, a good source of funding, uh, for our community. So, I thought it would be important for, for him to be involved and, and to understand those needs as well as his position as, as mayor pro tem. So, that'd be my recommendation. Anybody, any discussion?
Sounds good.
Does that need to be, oh, that's my motion?
Isn't that a vote, Larissa? Yes, it does need to be.
I made the motion second. Ms. Bellinger, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, so we will move on, uh, to G. Consider approval of a contract buying between the city of Nacogdoches and Dupla Chain Contractors for the two thousand nineteen water line improvements projects in a not-to-exceed amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Case Offerman, the Assistant Director of Public Works. Bringing you this evening, uh, a contract, uh, for the two thousand nineteen water line improvements project. Staff has identified a list of more than six, but, uh, many water lines that have historically, um, had many issues, failures, repairs. We worked with the utility construction staff to identify, uh, within the budget constraints that we are operating, uh, what our top priorities were for, this was two thousand nineteen, is when we started this design process. But, um, the, uh, the top six, uh, water lines that we need to address, which, uh, you've got on a map that was sent to you. It's on, uh, Virginia Avenue, Lunyville Road, Hayward Street, Fulgham and Cleaver Drive, along with Smith Road. They're all six-inch lines, about forty-six hundred, uh, feet in total, uh, which are in desperate need of, uh, replacement. We took bids on August seventeenth, uh, for this work. We had three bids, of which Dupla Chain Contractors was the low bid at four hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Uh, Dupla Chain Contractors is, again, no stranger, uh, to us here in the city. They've done several projects this year alone for us, including one ongoing on Ford Street, a, a storm drain replacement. They do excellent work and we, uh, are fully confident that they'll do a good job on this project. So, uh, with that, uh, staff would recommend award in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars to Dupla Chain Contractors. Be happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
Any public comment? Everybody looks tired. Okay, council?
No comment.
Ms. Bellinger?
I just have one simple question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where are all of these, um, contractors located?
Dupla Chain Contractors is from Alto. John Wright Construction is from Henderson and McKinney and Moore, I believe, are out of either Tyler or Longview.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Anderson?
No questions for me.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I will move that we approve Agenda Item seven G.
Second?
Second, Mr. Bolden? Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that carries.
And these are, uh, these water lines are guaranteed for the next forty years? Is that true?
At least, but I'm only going to be here another thirty-eight.
Good deal. Okay, our last item and kind of the one that caused a little pain. H, consider rejecting bid for construction of restroom facilities at Maroni Park, Pecan Park and Pilgrim Sportsplex, Community Services Director, Mr. Bray.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. And yes, Mayor, this did cause, cause some pain. About two years ago, we started looking at, um, replacing all of the restrooms in our parks. We needed something that served the public needs. Um, most of our restrooms are quite dated. I think all of you have commented on those in the past. Uh, we needed something that was attractive, easily maintainable. And so, we looked at, as a camper, I've visited many state parks. And we, so we started looking at prefabbed restrooms. Went out and we found a design that we liked. And just to do our due diligence, we reached out to a local contractor and said, could you give us a, an estimated cost for construction if we did this on design build locally? And we discovered that it was more economical to do it in-house and here locally as opposed to the outsourcing. So, we, um, acquired the services of Army Curtis. Um, and Army started working on a design in, um, late two thousand nineteen. Um, we started his services and then towards the end of two thousand nineteen, he came up with a design that you see on the screen in front of you. This was a slight improvement to those ones from the prefab because it has the roof, you can see, is inverted, which allowed for more daylight through the sides and more airflow, which is something you always want in a restroom that's not air-conditioned, especially in East Texas. So, a little thing called COVID kind of interrupted our plans and we knew that it was not wise to go out to try to build three restrooms, Maroni, Pecan and Sportsplex, earlier, um, last year and into this year. We released these bids in June of this year. We opened the bids on August the twelfth and we received two bids, seven hundred and fifteen thousand and seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars respectively. And those were from TCMC and Cox Contractors. That was well in excess of our four hundred and ten thousand dollars that we had anticipated this project to cost. And so, we went back to those just to do our due diligence again, went back to those prefab companies and inquired as to what their costs were today. And their costs have also kind of met that same inflation that we saw here locally. And they came back with bids that were closer to six hundred and eight hundred thousand. So, we were kind of right in the middle here locally. With the guidance of Army Curtis, um, he said that because of COVID, um, product and material pricing is way too volatile. Um, and he recommended, as does staff, that we reject these bids and not move forward with these bids at this time and wait until hopefully in the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. Um, Army did say, and he's here, uh, if you have any questions of him directly, but did say that he is seeing a slow trend and prices decreasing. And so, we, um, are recommending to you, Mayor and Council, that we reject these bids and wait until the first part of two thousand twenty-two to try this project once again. So, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
Okay. Public, do we have a public comment? Okay, Mr. Anderson, any comments?
No, I, I mean, I, any, any projects that were left for contract early this year, I, I have to imagine were going to come way over budget, um, given the excessive prices of, uh, building materials, certainly the first part of the year. So, uh, it, it makes perfect sense to hold off until things stabilize.
Mr. Bolden?
Oh, I agree with, uh, holding off, but do we have usable restrooms at these locations right now?
At, at most of our parks, yes, we do. Um, at Maroni, we do not have a restroom. The restroom disappeared when the swimming pool, Maroni Pool disappeared. But, where we don't, such as Maroni, we do have porta potties that are, they're under contract. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Like the Sportsplex, that's?
Correct, yes, sir.
Porta potties.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Bellinger?
No comments.
Okay. Uh, okay, do I have a motion?
Sure, some move?
Move, Ms. Bellinger?
Second.
H? Second. Mr. Anderson, any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Persuading to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, we will adjourn to executive session, uh, and return afterwards. Hope to see you here, but I would understand if, if we did. Nope, we're, we're going to, uh, leave executive session at eight-thirty-nine.